For February eighth, two thousand twenty-four, it is six P M. Please, can I have everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, first thing on the agenda, discussion and appointment. Discussion and appointment of Demetria Stefano.
Yes, that's correct.
To the Cable Advisory Committee for a one-year term, anticipated vote. Okay. You're late. All right. Need a minute?
Okay, I'm good now.
All right. So, you have a new member?
Yeah.
To your committee, or you want a new member to your committee? Do you want to introduce her?
So, Demetra.
I know, it's a hard name.
It was like Demi most of the time, so, like, Brandon, she expressed interest. She came last school committee meeting. She attended, got to see us set up and tear down and kind of got to see the most involved thing because setting up for those meetings takes the most work, so. You know, we had a meeting last week, discussed a little bit more with her, and she's interested, so.
Very good.
We're happy to have, you know, more people.
You're gonna have a full crew soon.
I know. Will be nice.
You're gonna have more, more people than the police department does. You're gonna have to deputize y'all. Making honorary firefighters and police officers and cable advisory.
It's definitely gonna be nice because like next week it's planning board and school committee, so a couple people up here to record planning board, a couple of us over at the school. You can get both meetings recorded.
Very good. All right. Demetra, right?
Yes.
You want to tell us about yourself? Why do you want to be on the cable committee?
Do I have to stand?
No. Our camera pans right to you. So, the good thing about this is whenever you're talking, it goes right to you.
Great, five years. So, yes, Demetra Stefano, I go by Demi. My fiance works for the committee.
Very good.
And I was very interested. I like to, well, we're first-time homeowners in Warren, so we think it's a good opportunity to be involved. I find it very interesting, the discussions that happen.
Very good.
Know a little bit more about what's going on and, I don't know, it's fun.
Very good. Good, you're bringing more people into the town. We need that. Keep up the good work. Do you have any questions, sir?
No, I don't.
Do you have any questions, sir?
No, sir.
Mr. Ferrari?
Nope.
Okay. So, great to have you. It's always good to have new people on the boards. And, you know, this is a start for both of you. It's kind of like the introductory phase. We'll get you on more boards and committees, don't worry. This is just a start for you. But, you know, love the initiative and let's do it, though.
All right, I'll make a motion to appoint Demetra Stefano to the Cable Advisory Committee for a one-year term.
Second.
All favor.
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. You are appointed to the board. I'm gonna sign this, make it official. I just realized you're wearing a suit jacket.
And jeans.
Now, I get the memo. I feel dressed now. Don't have to go home and change.
No, we don't want the meeting to last that long.
All right. So, welcome to the committee and thank you for your interest.
Take that through the counter, because she's gone. Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Okay, next thing on the agenda is discussion and appointment for boss, I can't even, come on, help me out.
Ostakio.
Ostakio Rodriguez Filho.
Filho.
Filho, okay. Ostakio Rodriguez Filho, correct?
You got it.
All right. To a full-time police officer for a one-year term, anticipated vote. Chief?
Thank you, sir. Today, I bring Ostakio Rodriguez.
Everyone, everyone.
In front of you today for appointment, full-time officer. He comes with part-time experience from Douglas and Oakham as well as full-time experience in Barry and Westbrook Field.
Okay.
Still in former local town.
Good.
Ostakio speaks Portuguese, Spanish, and English. He also has certifications in A-RI-OS, Advanced Roadside Impair Driving Enforcement, as well as is an FTO. So, I'd be able to bring that to our town as well.
Very good.
Oh, and also, I, my recommendation is to bring him in at the step two with his experience.
Did we get a recommendation from you?
Yeah.
Should be on the letter, yes.
Number two.
So, you want to be a police officer in that town?
So.
Yes, I do.
Introduce yourself, let's hear about you.
How's it going, everyone? Name is Ostakio. I'm originally from Brazil. I've been living in the United States for approximately twenty years. Been a police officer for roughly four years. And decided to come to Warren, got a few friends in town that work for the department. And I think it's a good place to be. It's a nice little town, bigger than Westbrook Field. And had a good, you have a good call volume, so I'm interested about it. And I just want to go out there and just serve the town, serve the community, and be here for you guys.
Very good. You have amazing leadership, too. You got a really good department here.
I agree with that.
You know, Chief's, Chief's a great guy. So, you're gonna be in good hands with, you know, him, you know, fire chief, those fire guys.
They're good, they're good, nice. I've been on a few calls with those guys.
They're great, too.
Can't wait for them.
Do you have any questions?
No, I don't, just welcome.
Thank you.
Do you have any question?
Welcome, I just, what does FTO means for the?
Field Training Officer. So, when new people come here, they have to be trained. He's got the certification to do it.
Perfect. Welcome.
Thank you.
If you see a yellow car waving at you, that's me.
I'll stop it.
No, you can stop me.
If he's doing something wrong, you stop him.
I guarantee you that he does not speak.
Let's see that, I'll be the judge.
He's the guy that you drive behind and you're like, oh, my God, step on the gas.
That's fine, I like those, I like those drivers.
Mr. Ferrari, do you have something?
No, I just, I wanted to say that it was a pleasure. We had our first round of interviews, and Ostakio did really well in the interview. And like, like the chief had indicated, he was coming from another department. So, it's always nice to get somebody who's academy-trained, who has some experience with dealing with a smaller community. And, you know, welcome to the town of Warren.
Thank you.
Did you have anything on the stepping grace?
No, I, I think it's appropriate because, you know, at, at this particular time, you know, it is budgeted for. So, the position that is currently being vacated is already at that step two. And based on his experience and his educational background, being a police officer from another community, and having the certifications as he does as a police officer, I think that's, that's warranted.
Very good. Do you have any?
No, I don't.
I also concur with you, I think we're gonna have to do, well, we could do one vote, but we just want to make sure we add that, start at that step in there. But again, he does have experience, FTO is a big thing to have. Also, you have standardized field sobriety certification. That's a good one to have, too, along with, do you have any others?
No, that, that's the one I'll.
Those are two? Okay. Well, we'll get you trained in some more stuff.
Will be important.
Chief's, Chief's always getting people in training and using you to the maximum of your capability. And believe me, if you want to do it, he'll send you to it.
I will.
So, he's a good job. All right, let's do a motion.
All right, I'll make a motion to appoint Ostakio Rodriguez to a full-time officer position, starting at step two.
Second.
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. And we're gonna sign this and make this official.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
My pleasure. Good to have you on board.
Yes, see you Monday.
Can I get that at the end?
Right there.
You can get it right now?
You can get it right now.
Chief?
Thank you.
So, just Monday, swear a minute?
Yep, Monday is gonna come down, and we're gonna do all the paperwork.
All right?
Thank you.
Take it. All right. Discussion on the progress of twenty-four North Street, thirty-eight Elm Street, and two-hundred O'Neil Street from the Board of Health. Dan, welcome back. So, we gave two weeks.
We gave you two weeks, there is movement on, well, first of all, I mean, Dan's at no point. We gave him two weeks, he responded, they have a crew working over there currently.
For twenty-four North Street?
Twenty-four North Street, okay. I've been over there, in and out of there the last two weeks. Talking with the landlord and the tenants over there that we have the issues with currently. They seem to be happy that stuff is getting done right now. The front hallway, main door, it has been replaced with a whole new door jamb, front door, everything. They went down the hallway, the hallway doors that had the mold on it, they took them out, put new doors in. Where the mold was all over the walls, they cut that out, put all the sheet rock in, and they're chasing it all the way up the hallway, and they're actually painting the whole hallway as they go up. So, that's the main common entry.
So, they taking care of the mold problems?
In there, now they have to get the individual apartments. So, they're in two B, also, there's this, there's one person in two A, and the other one is in two B. Two A, yesterday, they were in the bathroom redoing, taking the fixtures out of the tub, changing those over, the ones that were all wired off to nothing. Fixing the ceiling, it's no good. And then they also ordered windows. I don't know if they ordered the entire building or just the apartments. But I told them that they cannot put the windows in until permits are pulled because that is structural.
So, that's the next part of our?
Let's get there for, let's finish this first, okay? On two B, they replaced the stove, brand-new stove, and the other one's gone. They took the, the air ducts that were falling out and replaced one of them. They have to order another one for the other one, it's a different style. So, they didn't, they've got that one on, on order. The room in her apartment that was all leaking, they tore all the wall apart again, and they found all the disintegrated napkins. But they chased the pipe, there's a pipe in the wall, and it's a storm drain from the roof. It's leaking up at the roof. The roof itself is coming right down the drainpipe. So, that's gonna present more of a problem for them, they didn't need a permit.
To, for emergency repair in roofs, they can just notify the building department and then get a permit.
Yeah. So. That's on the agenda, they're doing, making repairs in there right now so that no water leaks, the ceiling was ready to fall in, so they put a new ceiling in. They insulated the wall, there was absolutely no insulation in there. On two A, they replaced some of her kitchen cabinets that were all rotted out. They're in, like I told you earlier, they're in the bathroom there. They took measurements of all the windows in her apartment also. And they're on orders, probably what I was told. Whether that's for the entire building again, I don't know. When I stopped by earlier today, they had left to go pick out, pick up some supplies. But they did have a pile of lumber up back. She did say that they were gonna be doing her deck and her porch. This is, that's gonna have to be structural, they're gonna have to pull a permit first.
So. They are moving. Want to make sure they're not doing unpermitted work because?
They're doing what they can right now. I've been in contact with him for the last couple of days, despite I contacted him again and asked for the permits for the facility, for the work that's supposed to be done on the windows and the porch and everything else. And I asked for the contractor's license. And, oh, I'll get that. So, I have, I told him I'd need that as quick as possible. And I get, um, okay, I'll get it to you as soon as I can. So, now I think we're in a game here because I had a discussion with Adam this morning about the contractor there. Name rang a bell with him. It seems like this guy has done work around the area before and has been kicked out because of no license. He's piggybacking off of somebody else. And there's criminal activity in his background.
Yeah, we can't get into that, that's.
That permits, that, that, that doesn't allow him to get a license. So, that's where that is right now.
So, is Mr. Habib on? Sir, yep?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right. I just wanted to make sure you were on. I know you said you were gonna join us via Zoom, so.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank, thank you for coming. Thank you for joining us on the meeting. Okay. Anything else, sir?
I'm all set with that one.
Okay. So, with that, Carrie, for the taxes, are you satisfied with the agreement?
Yes, yep, he's gonna.
Just identify, who yourself?
I'm sorry, Carrie Schmidt, the tax collector. He's gonna twenty percent, I think it was a twenty percent down payment of just over twenty-three hundred bucks we're gonna have on Monday. That's, he's gonna send it to us in a bank check in certified fines. And as soon as I get that check, I'll notify the building department that, you know, that he's paid, made that down payment. And then going forward, it's gonna be a thousand dollars a month until the end, the end of the year, when he should be paid off.
Okay.
And in addition to keeping up with any taxes that come due.
Right. Great. As long as you're satisfied?
Yeah.
You know, we want to make sure before any, any permits are granted.
Well, we have the agreement, I don't have the tax.
You got an agreement?
I don't have any taxes.
And, Mr. Habib, you're gonna be paying the tax, the twenty percent on Monday, correct? For the twelfth?
Yes, sir, yes, I am, absolutely.
Okay, and from there, you can get permits? And you understand you have to get permits for the deck, the windows, and any other type of permitted work that's there?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay. And, and I really appreciate that you're joining us and, you know, doing, doing this meeting with him. We're just following up with you, just make sure the work's getting done. And you gotta provide the contractor's license also for that permit work.
Absolutely, I have, I've asked for the contractor to provide me with the license, and I will forward it on as soon as I have it available.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I just wanted to make sure, is BJ making herself available?
I haven't been.
Okay. Because, I mean, he's obviously trying to do the work and do it quickly, but if it, there's a bottleneck on our end, we don't want.
You'll handle that, right?
Yep.
Okay. So, let's, I mean, he's doing this, so.
Make sure it gets facilitated, so.
Yeah, let's make it easy for him to do. Well, not easy, but you know what I mean.
No, but.
Without delay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, did you have anything else for Mr. Habib?
Not like I sent you in the text message this morning, I still need access to the other apartments.
Okay, sir, you're gonna grant access to Board of Health for the other apartments?
Yes, absolutely, I fully intend to.
Okay.
I've just been, I've just been focused in the past two weeks to move as quickly as possible to make the repairs on the, the units that have the violations to ensure that, that I'm encompassing with what we had discussed two weeks ago. But I have every intention for, for making, or granting Mr. Thibodeau access. I also wanted to mention that I have ended my relationship with the management company that had been managing both eighteen North and also twenty-four North, and I'm personally involved in the management at this time.
Okay. And so far, you've been satisfied with the, so you, you've definitely done a lot better since then. We really appreciate that, and you, you stepping up and taking ownership of your property and making sure that, you know, people are living in a, a, you know, place that's, you know, good conditions in it. That's your name that falls onto this, and, you know, sometimes when you trust in others, they don't really have your best interests in there. So, thank you for very, for stepping up on that and getting it done. And I'm sure the residents are very happy with that, too, so.
Sir, sir, if I may say something just for the record?
Yes, sir.
I, I do, you know, I do want to thank everyone, everyone in the meeting, as well as all the, all the town apartments offices, Mr. Ferrara, for facilitating this. I, I'm actually personally disgusted by the photos and the information that I saw come out and the types of shoddy repairs that have been done. I live in the greater Boston area, and I, I don't, you know, that's, that's, it's certainly my fault. I had not been there to do my own personal inspections. However, going forward, I will continue to do in-person inspections, and I have direct communications with, with tenants. And I'm actually very embarrassed that they were living in those conditions. And I sincerely, sincerely hope that this board, as well as, as well as anyone else listening, understands that, that this is not how I like to conduct myself or my business operations. And, and I will do everything that's necessary to rectify not only the violations, but also ensure that some of the longstanding tenants get an opportunity to, for example, move from their current unit that may be, it may, may not have any violations on them, but, you know, it may be substandard compared to the renovated units. So, I'm also facilitating that as well with the, with some of the tenants at twenty-four North as well.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chief, did smoke alarms get resolved, too?
I haven't. Adam Lavoie, Fire Chief, I have not been there for that portion of it because there's gonna be some electrical work that needs to be done for that system, for emergency lighting. So, until an electrical permit is pulled, and someone that comes in and does that, then I will do, go, make sure I go through and do a full inspection with that. As Dan said, I did talk to him this morning. The handyman stuff, the, the normal doors and, and that need to replace, painting and everything, that's fine. You know, I just, we're just trying to make sure that everything else that requires a permit and, and requires a license is done, is done correctly at this point. So, I will be getting in there to do that portion of it once they determine, you know, once they pull the electrical license, because there's gonna have to be some work done to that, to that common area where those emergency lights are, and some of those fixtures are gonna have to be replaced, but I will go in there for a full inspection.
Thank you very much, Chief. And you're gonna allow that, Mr. Habib?
Yes, sir, absolutely, fully, fully intend to. And also, I wanted to thank the chief, Mr. Lavoie, for, for all of his support as well. Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome. Do you have any questions? No, I'm just, I'm really pleased. Yeah, this is great.
I'm happy. Good, good turnout, you know? Do you have anything?
I'm happy, too, I'm just crossing my fingers it keeps that way.
Absolutely. You got a good thing going, let's keep it going. You know, let's build your reputation back up as being an outstanding landlord in our community, sir. We don't want to see it go the other way.
I did run into one of the tenants this morning to myself, and, and that person did tell me that he was allowing them to move to another unit that was being worked on. So, I mean, there is definitely truth to that, that I, because I did see what happened, I just bumped into one of them today, and I specifically asked if the work was going and the workers had been there and been doing their thing. And I talked to Dan and checked in with him after that, but that particular tenant said they actually weren't moving to another unit that was a little more suitable for them, too.
Okay. Very good. Did you have anything, Rob? No. Anything else, Dan? Do you need us to follow up with them more on this, or you guys got it under your hands?
I've got it one way on him with text messaging, and if I need to pick up and talk to him on the phone, I can do that.
Okay. And if you have any issues, you'll bring it to us, so we don't need to be any, a part of this anymore.
No.
Okay, all right. So, Mr. Habib, thank you very much for stepping up. The Board of Selectmen is gonna step out of this picture for a while, and Board of Health and the related departments are gonna handle this because you're doing what you need to do, and we appreciate that. And if you have any, anything, just let us know, Mr. Ferrara is always available. If you need help with anything, we want to see you successful in our community. Just keep up the good work.
Thank you so much, I appreciate everyone's time and attention, and I apologize that it came to this level. However, if all goes well, I hope never to, to be presenting in this capacity. So, thank you all, and I hope you have a great evening.
You, too, sir. You good? You good, sir?
I'm good, sir.
All right. So, what do we got next? So, we got thirty-eight Elm Street?
Thirty-eight Elm Street, that's up for tax.
Yep. Tax issues.
Yep.
So, you guys are all done pretty much with that, because it's going to tax title?
Yeah, they, they returned the last citation unopened after thirty days, so they have no interest in doing it.
Yeah. Right, and two-hundred O'Neil Street?
Two-hundred O'Neil Street, I sent out a, correct, oh, no, corrective action, a demand order for payment for a hundred twelve thousand dollars in back due fines. They backed to the first day that we were there.
Okay.
As of right now, we haven't got the green card back yet. So, I don't know where that stands.
So, you don't know if they received it yet?
Correct.
Okay. All right. And nobody reached out to you yet from them?
No.
All right. So, we're still on a standing with that, you're gonna just keep one?
As, as I stated in the notification I gave to them, so, you know, the, the fines are still tallying up.
Okay. Do you need us to follow up on, on this one with you?
I think we're gonna need to follow up on this one again, once I find out whether that green card was, once we get the green card back.
Two weeks, where do you?
I give it, I give it another, at least another week.
So, you want to wait till, till Thursday?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we'll follow up with this one on Thursday, see where it stands, and then go from there. Unless you just want to get back to us when you get it, you get more information.
Oh, we can do that, too.
Yeah, all right, so just let us know, you know, if you get any new information, you want to update the board about it.
I did go up there and walked around the property, and the outside lighting was on. But I think that's when the timer comes on. If they're like, I do want to get into the house again and see if the water is running.
Probably some broken pipes, if there's no heat on.
I need police there to do that, I actually don't want to just walk into the property.
Can Board of Health do it? Statutory or do you need a warrant to enter the facility?
You need something to get in there.
Right, that's why I don't want to walk in.
Yeah. You'd have to get something from court to enter the. You'd have to get something from court to enter there. Unless there was imminent threat?
We know it's not a hassle.
Somebody dying, something like that?
Prior to this, when it first happened, we had that, but we don't have that now.
All right. Um, are you good with just following up?
Yes, sir.
More information?
Yeah. Right.
So, kinda stuck on that one? When we get information, you know, then we can move forward. Did you have something, Kerry?
I'm just wondering, is Thirty Eight Elm Street getting fined, too? You said you sent a hundred and twelve thousand dollars worth of fines to Two Hundred O'Neill. Is Thirty Eight Elm getting fined as well?
Uh, we can do that, but I haven't been able to get inside the property.
Yeah, I'm just curi, I was just curious.
Yeah, they, they're not being cooperative with anything. So, you know, they've been given the opportunity to pay taxes, they're not paying that. They're not working with the town. They've been requested they attend meetings, so they've been explained, so we'll get at least work with them. And they just don't want to.
I pretty much, when they got the last correction order, to return back to us after thirty days unopened, that was the telltale sign I did, that I should do anything.
So I think, you know, again, some properties, we're just not gonna be able to fix. And unfortunately, we have to go other routes with that. All right. So thank you very much for the update, sir. Do you have anything else to add?
That's all stuff, you know. I'm in contact with Mr. Habib on a regular basis, and I go over there almost every day or every other day that I can.
Very good.
As soon as I find out whether this guy's licensed or not. If he's not licensed, I'm stalking him.
Um, Chief, did you have anything?
Um, I think the only thing I would say on this is this, this one has brought up a little bit of a unique situation, as we've talked, because this is a multifamily. Is there any way that we can have something in place where as soon as a multifamily like this falls in any kind of tax arrears, that there's a notification? And the only reason I bring this up, and Kerry, you know, obviously needs to be part of the conversation, is that it's a little different with multifamilies and, than single-family residences when it comes to these demand-type situations. Because if you have a multifamily, and there are tenants in there, and all of a sudden the person's behind in taxes, we have the bylaw that says they cannot get the permits to do anything until the taxes are paid, which I understand. However, in emergency situations and stuff, it can be tough, because, you know, you don't wanna put life and safety over, over money in some circumstances. So I, I guess in this situation, this is a, a good situation, because the person is being proactive, and they're doing what they're supposed to do. But what if happens if they don't? Uh, you know, and it's a situation where somebody absolutely refuses to respond to letters, they don't do anything. I guess, instead of getting to the point where they're ten, fifteen, and twenty thousand dollars or more into arrears, can we put something in there where we get a notification after a small, much smaller amount, so we can start that process? So we know someone may be completely absentee, and then we can go down a different route of going for a tax title earlier, or something of that effect? Just because when they're, when they're twenty thousand in arrears and still have to do fifteen in repairs or something, it just adds to the thing. I'm just thinking outside.
I think, I think this is a good example of how, you know, Kerry is a tax collector, is willing to work with individuals in these situations, because they came up with an agreement where he's gonna put down a percentage, and he's agreeing, he's gonna pay off the balance in monthly installments. Now, if that falls behind, and he breaks that deal at any point, Kerry's gonna take action. Because really, when it comes into tax, taxes and stuff, that's her job.
Oh, no, I, I agree with you.
And that's what she does. And she does a really good job at it. And, you know, this is, again, an example of it. She's going after him, saying, "No, you're not getting any permits, but if you give me an agreement, and you give me twenty percent down, I'll work with you."
Yeah. And I agree, I, I think you're a hundred percent right. And I said this exact thing to Jim. I, my suggestion was to look at some sort of a plan, so that we could also have them do permits and stuff at the same time. But it just brought up for conversation in my mind, you know, if we have a similar situation before that, it might help to know that a multifamily's going into some sort of a thing earlier, so that we can get on to that process quicker, in case something like this happens, is all I'm saying. So, you know, it was just kind of a wake-up call, where it's like, oops, we got this situation now. A plan is, is, is in place, is, is great, if the person's being responsive, but what if that isn't happening? It's better to know about it when they owe only a couple thousand, as opposed to something bigger than that.
It affects many families.
Yeah, just, it's not that person, it's the people living there that, that are suffering the consequences of it. And that's, that was my only concern when I talked to Jim, and, and, you know, I just said, you know, it's not, it's not fair for these people to pay for it when this person's trying to play catch-up, and it's not even them, it's women there, so...
And to back up off of him, the, the tenants in Two A, um, they work in the general area. For them to have to relocate to another place that may not be close to their work, and they physically walk to work, they don't have motor vehicle transportation, it puts another hardship on them.
Yeah, that's why we need to be, you know, more involved with these multifamily developments or houses, because it does affect a lot of people within that area. I think this is a good example. I think it went, well, you identified an issue, said, "Hey, is something wrong yet?" Taxes came up, well, okay, well, if they're gonna get a permit, can they get a permit? Well, they owe back taxes. Bylaw prevents them from owing back taxes. Kerry worked with them? Getting a percentage? So the town's getting something out of it, they're getting their money back, and working with it, because it is a lot of money all of a sudden. It was, um, so they're paying, they owe eleven thousand six hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty six, forty-four cents. So they're gonna give you two thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty-nine cents on the twelfth. So the town's getting some money, and it's not deal breaker. It's not like other properties that owe fifty thousand dollars, you know. It's eleven thousand dollars, and there's an arrangement made. So I think this is a good example of that. But, um, what's your thoughts on it, Kerry?
I, as far as, as far as, um...
So throwing up a red flag when you get a property, a multi-family?
Oh, I'm happy, I'm happy to keep an eye on that, but I understand that some of these properties have a couple thousand dollars in taxes a quarter. So as soon as they make this one quarter, they're already a couple of dollars.
And I, I think, I, I think I'm referring to more cases where we realize it's been an entire year that hasn't been paid.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, that's all I'm saying, is because if we started earlier and we know about it, we don't run into the problem. Because if it was a property that has fifty thousand dollars all of a sudden, then we got a bigger problem. It must, it's less likely they're gonna do any repairs if they're not paying that kind of big money. So all I'm saying is knowing about it earlier can, can help us come to that, come to that goal of working with the person to get what there's, get, get to where we all wanna be. And it's a little bit easier.
Yeah, is it something where you can flag a, flag a property? If it gets a multifamily property where you're saying, "Hey, I think this one's falling, falling a little far behind"?
Well, regularly, and I'm, I haven't done it every month, but I, I send out lists of unpaid taxes. And so they would be included, you know, we could, I could run a highlighter on the multifamilies.
Yeah, I, I can work with Kerry, we can sit down and run which ones that we're kinda need to keep an eye on. You know, and like I said, she's doing a great job. I, I'm not complaining about it all, and the fact that she has a, a, you know, a, a, you know, everything written up and a plan in place for this, this fantastic. And that's all I wanted, too, because I just wanted, is I'm good with somebody paying their taxes a little at a time if they need to, while still being able to provide the work they need to do for the, for the tenants. So, you know, I just was looking to, you know, to, to get ahead of a huge red flag when down the road that owes tons and tons of money and isn't gonna do anything, that's all.
It's not like we have that many...
No, there's not a whole lot, and that's why. It's not, you're talking a few, a couple, a couple, yeah, maybe, maybe a dozen properties at the most. So it's not a whole lot. I think it's just something that we can keep a little bit better eye on, so that we don't run into a problem in the future, that's all.
Do you have anything?
No.
Thoughts?
No, no. No, just sounds like the system's working pretty well.
Very good. Do you have anything?
I love how the chief sets the tone on safety first. I really like that, Chief.
Well, like, you know, I'm talking to Jim there, you know, like I said, I mean, it, it, at the end of the day, it really isn't the person that doesn't live on site not warned that it's suffering. You know what I mean? They, yeah, they owe the money, but it's the people in the building that are having the problem, you know?
It's like the comment that I made at the last meeting, too. It says, "I'd like to take Johanna and her crew and stick them, let, let them live there for six months, see how they like it."
I, I get it. In this particular case, I really, I don't, I'm talking with the owners, I, I don't really think there was malicious intent. I think that, I think in my personal opinion, that, I think that they were paying out to another company that was telling them the work was being done, and they were being taken advantage of wet as well. You know, I, you know, and so this is one of those situations that, you know, they jumped on it, and they, they started doing what they're supposed to do right off the bat. So, I mean, they're, you know, they were very responsive. They're just kinda few and far between, to be honest. So, uh, you know, so this particular one...
Again, if you notice more.
Yeah.
And I know you probably got some more in your list to go down that I'd flag in for you.
Across the street I'm watching, because I got that one, too, Twenty Seven. So, with the landlord there, that's working out to a degree. I could go back over there next week, because that's between tenant and landlord. Right now, it's a court case. So, is he making, he's making repairs under court order? So...
So, you guys are doing a good job? You know, you handling them? And you have, if you have these properties that are just, like, getting ridiculous, we told you, give us your top three, and more to dress them. And I think we, we're dressing them aggressively now. You know, we made decisions on each of them. One of them's being fixed, the tenants are getting happy, because they're getting nice new apartments now. So I, I chalked that up as a win.
I do, too.
So you, you did good. We wouldn't have known that, nobody would've fixed it if they, the landlord probably wouldn't even have known if you didn't go in there and say, "Hey, unacceptable, we need help on this, let's get this fixed." So, you know, and I think everybody came together as a team, got it done. So, good job. Same Kerry, you know? Keep it on top of those people with their taxes. There's no more freebies in this town. Everybody's gonna pay their fair share. You know, I have to pay my taxes. You guys have to pay your taxes. So if somebody wants something, pay your taxes, and we'll be more than willing to help you out, we'll work with you. Don't pay? The task man's gonna come. Kerry's gonna be knocking on your door.
And where you live.
All right. So, good outcome, and when you get more information, let us know. We'd like to know how these work.
I'm gonna file a roll with all the emails, and all the text messages, and all the photos, because when I go there, I, I photo everything.
Yeah. You gotta document it. Make sure you send it to, you know, Board Health Secretary, too.
Yeah, it's all in the files.
Puts it in a queue.
I've gotta run a file for each unit. And we have one major file for Twenty Four. And we have the file for Thirty Eight, we have the file for Two Hundred, that's getting kinda big.
Very good. Did you have anything else, sir?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. Anybody else have anything else? Let me stop this. Great, moving on. Great, discussion and appointment to election workers, anticipated vote. We got a lot here.
Do we need to read all these in a motion, or?
Yeah.
Yes? Motion? You ready?
Yeah, ready.
All right. Make a motion to appoint the following to polling places, A and/or B, the following election officers. Karen M. Wilk, Linda Cunningham, Kathleen Vanis, Phyllis A. Delina, Virginia Fleming, Karen Kelly Gurey, Carbo...
You missed one.
Larkin?
Sylvia Cummings?
No, he's going down the first list. He's going from this piece of paper.
Oh, you gave him the pa, okay, no, my, sorry.
Tracy S. Mazur Mazer, Agnes Y. Sablock, James M. Stockley, Liliana A. Robel, Drew King, Sylvia Cummings, Mary Ann Petruski, Heather Bridges, Kathy M. Duncan, Cheryl E. Gagnon, Kathy J. Coop, Cooperts, Patricia Morrison, Donna Alpina, Carol Sandra Saucville, Glenn Sisguayet, Linda L. Robel.
Second.
All in favor?
Richa Hucker, aye.
Dede Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay. Next thing on the agenda, acceptance of a state grant in the amount of thirty-two thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars from the Mass Office of Disability Municipal ADA Improvement Grant, and authorize the town administrator to sign on behalf of the town, anticipated vote. And ADA is Americans with a disability, Americans with Disabilities Act. So people know. Okay, awesome, got another grant. Mr. Ferrara, did you wanna add anything on this?
No, I just wanted to say that this grant, we worked on with CMRPC to address updating our, our ADA accessibility, um, plan. And this will also take a look at parks. It's gonna look at the libraries, too, the two libraries. It's going to look at all of our municipal-owned buildings. And it's going to, you know, I think the plan was, it's, it's, it's an older plan. I think it's back in two thousand eight-ish or so. So it needs some updating. This will provide that update that is needed, and give us a roadmap as to where some of our deficiencies may be, and how we should go about to improve them, and some estimates on some costs. There is a kickoff that they would like to schedule relatively soon, because this grant is, is kind of unique, because the department wants, all of the State Department, on the Office of Disability, wants this grant to be wrapped up by June thirtieth of this year. So it's a, it's a, it's a real fast-moving timetable in order to get the work done. And, but CMRPC, along with some of their other support staff, believe that they can complete the project within a, within this period of time. And they feel as though that they can get started relatively quickly on this, and they're looking to do, you know, a potential kickoff on the end of the month. We are gonna get some dates from them. I should have them, you know, either later today or tomorrow with some dates. And the dates, what they're looking to do is they want to interview department heads for this kickoff. So it doesn't necessarily have to be at a selectmen's meeting. They're looking to, to talk directly to department heads about their departments, how their offices are set up, you know, the, how their egresses are, are in and out of their offices. So they are looking to, you know, to have that discussion, and to be introduced to department heads, that would also allow access to their buildings as well. So those dates will probably be towards the end of the month. If, if you want it, I, I could see if I could get it at a, at a meeting of, of the selectmen, if, if it's needed. If not, then I could, you know, have them do it, you know, during, with the department heads, during the day.
Well, we're gonna do a kickoff meeting, right? So let's do it during a selectmen meeting.
Okay.
And then we're gonna need two weeks to post it, right? Because it has to be in the paper?
No.
No.
It's not a public hearing.
No, no.
It's not a public hearing, it's just a kickoff.
Thank you very much, have a good night. Take care. Okay. So find out when they can come, come on a Thursday night?
Okay.
We'll schedule them.
All right.
All right?
Very good.
Good with that?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
All right, so let's make a motion to accept the grant? Unless you guys have any questions, objections, you don't want it?
Send the money.[1728.21]
You don't want the grant? Good?
Alright, I'll make a motion to accept a grant from MA Office of Disability, um, for the municipal ADA improvements, um, in the amount of thirty-two thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars and, uh, have the town administrator sign on behalf of the town.
Second.
All in favor?
Richi Hucker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Okay, discussion on possibly entering into an agreement with Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission to provide technical and professional services for the town's ADA self-evaluation and trans- um, transition plan, anticipated vote. Okay, Mr. Ferrari have something on that?
So, this is the actual, um, agreement, a draft agreement that, um, that is being presented before the board to actually do the work. Um, so, CMRPC, along with their support staff, um, have, have expressed an interest in, in, in doing, uh, the, uh, the, uh, study and the assessment, um, the scope of services are, are, are attached there. And I know it says the, the water district buildings, but those have been, um, taken off because those are not, uh, that's not part of the town.
That's not part of the town.
No. Um, so, um, this is the agreement that's before, uh, for consideration, um, for the board, uh, to enter into this agreement. And then we could, um, potentially get moving on this the end of the month.
This, the ADA part includes the, um, transfer station?
It includes, uh, no, it does not include the transfer station. It includes the wastewater treatment facility. So, the facilities it includes is the Main Street Fire Station, Fire Station B, Police Station, Highway Garage, Senior Center, Warren Public Library, West Warren Public Library, and the wastewater treatment facility.
Should we do the transfer station? Do we want to have that?
That's a very simple one. Maybe we can, we could drop it in there. What happened over there is that they put the ADA parking on the opposite side of the dumpsters. So, it's kind of awkward.
I could probably see, I can ask them to get that replaced.
You know, that will be.
Replace the water.
Water, just, yeah, yeah.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it will.
Yeah, good catch.
Because they, when they lay out the parking plant, the, uh, the parking, you know, have you seen where you put all the clothes? Right next to it, that's the handicap spot.
Yeah.
Doesn't make any sense.
No. It, it, it's kind of difficult. Well, it's also, it's a tough situation because the, um, you know, the bins aren't really handicapped accessible.
Yeah.
To get, to get in there because you gotta walk upstairs for a ramp to throw your recycling in.
Yeah.
So, it's kinda, it's kind of a tough one. But yeah, they should look at it at least.
But the guy there is always helping. So, I can assume that if somebody has a handicap, you know, vehicle with a sticker, they can go right in front and they'll help him throw the stuff, at, at least.
And I, I've seen that. They, they've helped people and I've seen people with, um, you know, with wheelchair vans pull in there. And they usually have somebody helping them, um, not from there, but they usually have, um, somebody helping them, a family member. But, um, yeah, it'd be good to look at. So, if we switch out, uh, the, um, water plants with the.
Yeah, sure. We could definitely do that.
Are we good with context with that change?
Yes.
You good with that change?
Yep.
So, the wastewater treatment plant facility isn't town-owned either?
No.
So, you're gonna take that one out?
The wastewater treatment plant, yeah.
No, the wastewater treatment plant would stay in.
Oh, no, yeah, no, the sewer department. Yes, that's ours.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. I was thinking.
No, the, the water departments aren't ours.
I was thinking the water treatment plant, not the wastewater.
The opposite, the other side of the spectrum.
Yep.
You actually got me on that one too because I'm thinking, I was going with you and I'm like, wait a second. No, but the sewer department is ours.
I got it.
Alright.
You have a question?
Joe?
Joe Goddard, what else?
Yes, sir.
Uh, for the record, there is a handicap parking space in front of the Warren Library, but it's not handicap accessible into the library.
Right. Yeah, they have a space, but they can't get in. That's why they have West Warren is because that is handicap accessible. So, um, but this is, this is gonna look at that and if changes need to be made and what it would cost.
And the good news, I've been thinking in my head a lot about that handicap access and I found a solution. So.
Oh, really?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna enjoy that kickoff meeting.
Very good.
For the library.
For the library.
Yes, for the Warren Library.
Yeah, because I park there a lot because I go to the market. So, every time I go there, I look at it and then bingo, I got a solution. So. At least it's an option. Right?
Good. Right? So, we good?
We're good.
Yep.
So, we do a vote?
Uh, make a motion to enter an agreement with Central Mass Regional Planning Commission to provide technical and professional services for the town's ADA self-evaluation and transition plan.
Second.
With the change?
Uh, with the changes as discussed.
Transfer station, adding the transfer station, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Richi Hucker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, discussion on proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty-five selectmen's budget anticipated vote. Okay, so, I met with Mr. Ferrari last week?
Yep.
And we discussed some changes on the budget. We changed it from the original one, um, because again with legal, um, we had to update a little bit. And then the original proposed budget had Mr. Ferrara's pay a little high, so we adjusted that because it was a little less than what was presented in the, our first proposed budget. Um, so I think we're doing decent here. Do you guys have any questions on anything within the budget? In the green was what adding?
We added more money to it.
And the yellow is?
Yellow is waiting for contractors to get back to us.
Okay. And that's the generator expense.
And then also.
And then also.
Insurance.
Insurance.
Insurance. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I, I do also want to, just to bring to the board's attention, um, you know, I plugged in a number here and I, I think we had talked about it for the technology annual subscription fees, you know, um, we're looking at, you know, getting some additional quotes. I have one other company that, uh, I've been trying to make contact with to have them come out and give us a, a quote and, and have an assessment. Um, we already had one. Um, that one is, is indicated right here. They're, they are on the state list, so, the bid list. So, they, they have a set of, you know, price. So, their, their, um, their, uh, their cost is, is much less than what we're currently paying right now. So, there, there is a savings there. Um, but, you know, that is still fluid. I'm still waiting on getting one more, uh, person in here.
That one's still in the works. So, but let's not lower till we have something and we vote on something. If we're gonna switch to a different.
Right.
Provider.
Right.
You know, we don't want to sell ourselves short because if we turn around and say, okay, well, yeah, these other guys are less, but we're also getting much less in the service. Or if we get in the same service and we can get it for less, then we'll decide that. But we haven't made that decision yet where we.
Will you multiply?
You know, we're gonna do that. So, I'm, I'm good with leaving it as is right now till we have more information.
Okay, alright, alright.
Are you good with that?
I mean, that would have to go then back up to forty thousand eight hundred dollars.
No, it's more than that.
Oh, more than that, okay.
Yeah, I'm having Rich.
So, thirty-five, thirty-one times twelve is forty-two thousand three hundred and seventy-two dollars.
So, if you want to plug that number back in.
Forty-two thousand, I'm sorry.
Uh, three hundred and seventy-two.
Three seventy-two, okay.
So, wait, where is this?
I'll plug that back in.
Instead of.
Yeah, because we haven't made the decision to go to anybody else yet. So.
Yeah, okay. Forty-two, three seventy-two. Yeah, I want to make sure that we're getting apples to apples with this IT. I, I have to say, I really liked it, you know, I just did a training email yesterday, I think it was. So, those are really good. And then the fake spam.
Yeah, they do tests. They send out tests all the time.
That's super important.
Well, the, the, this other company that we, Derek and I had, had talked with, you know, they do this very, we told them exactly what, what we have and we want the same exact product and.
Yeah, okay.
But I, I think that's company we need to get in here. And, and when we look at this and we say, okay, you guys say, this is our best bet. Let's get them in here and let's all talk to them.
Alright.
So, we can hit them with the questions and make sure we're getting exactly what we need. Cause.
We were trying to hit a few, a couple more before bringing someone to the table.
But let's, let's just plan on being with, you know, our current provider till we.
Yeah, definitely.
And then they may turn around and say, well, yeah, you, you, we could do this, but yeah, it's gonna cost you fifty-eight thousand with all this extra and the amount of accounts we have and all this stuff after they really get into the nitty-gritty and look at it.
Yeah.
So. Right?
And, um, we were looking at the, the matching grant, um, th- uh, item here. I, I, I mean, I think we could be safe. We had it originally at, at twenty. I think we could be safe at fifteen.
What line are we in?
Matching, uh, selectmen matching grant.
Yeah, where is that? Is that a selectman?
Can we add numbers to the lines?
Yeah, that would help.
Sure. So, selectmen matching grant.
Yeah.
Thirteenth, thirteenth item down.
Oh, yeah, there it is. So, taken five, okay. Um. So, we've only used seventeen hundred to date?
To date, yeah.
Wait, really?
Yep.
Oh.
Well, no, to one twenty-nine, twenty-four, not to date.
One, well, yeah, right.
There was one week in there.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
But, um.
But we did, that's it? I thought we had, oh, okay.
But we do have a lot of grants coming up where it's, that we're gonna be.
Don't require a match.
Doesn't the master plan? Or did we go and, and have a separate article for that?
No, no, we have it, you know, we have it for, scheduled for this fiscal year.
It's already.
So, that seventeen hundred's gonna go up by some number.
Yeah, eventually before the end of the year, right?
Yeah, okay.
I mean, this, this is only until January of twenty, twenty-ninth. You know, so these numbers are gonna change.
Sure, yeah.
Some of them are gonna change tonight.
Um, so, why, why would you think we'd need to go down on that? What's your argument for that?
Well, I, I, you know, I, I'm trying to, um, look at every department's budget in, in, in looking at the surplus that we've had historically the last two fiscal years. They've been pretty strong. And, and at some point, somebody is going to make the argument or say, you know, why are we having so much surplus? Well, the reason why is, there's a combination. It's a combination of additional revenue and it's a combination of departments not using their entire budget. And so, when departments don't use their entire budget, somebody could say, well, jeez, you're overtaxing people too much. And so, if we go at this, you know, in, in, in a manner of, you know, being like a surgeon and looking at line by line and seeing if we can chop off and say, oh, maybe I can save five thousand here, save ten thousand here, save two thousand here. Then all of a sudden, all those little savings add up to something big. And then the increases for budget year after budget year are not as bad.
Yeah.
Okay. So, none of the current grants that we're getting right now are gonna affect this number other than the master plan.
Right.
Which we're accounting for because this is twenty twenty-five. This is a new budget season that we're working on. And then twenty twenty-four is handling the master plan, the twenty percent.
Right.
For the match.
What was the, the, uh, how much is that?
Ten thousand.
Okay.
So, when you, when you're looking at fifteen, well, even that's kind of running us because if something else pops up and we need to come up with eight grand.
Right. I mean, and then we can address, like, if something was to come up, we could address it in the fall, right? At, in November. So, so if you needed, you know, an extra ten grand because there's a, you know, a, a grant coming out that you require to match, you can just address it at the special.
Okay.
Right. So, that fifteen thousand's gotta get us through at least half the year in twenty-five for a special.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Alright, so you're good with dropping it five grand? We shave off the five grand, we'll only have fifteen.
Yeah.
Are you good with that?
Yep.
Okay, I'm good with that. Alright, um, was there anything else that you pointed out?
Um, yep, so, so there's an, you, you know, if you look at, uh, the municipal financial software, uh, you'll see that there's a significant increase.
Second one from the bottom.
Um, second one up from the bottom. Uh, and the, uh, the reason for that is, is that the first year, obviously, was the implementation. So, we got a grant, a state grant for sixty-five thousand dollars to implement the software. And, you know, four thousand of it wa- wasn't covered, wasn't part of implementation. So, we had a budget for that, for the actual, uh, subscription. And now you have to pay all the licensing fees for the next, you know, I think it's seven years out. Um, that you're gonna be paying that fixed cost of twelve thousand two twenty-five for all the licensing, um, agreements that we have with the software. So, that's now under the selectmen's budget.
Okay. And that's just a fixed cost? There's nothing we can do about that?
That's fixed, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright. Um, regional dispatch, I will bring your attention to that. So, um, regional dispatch, um, the town has enjoyed the last four years, um, of a, of a significant state grant. So, the first couple of years, there was no assessment. Then after the first couple of years, then it goes to, uh, twenty-five percent, uh, I mean, fifty percent assessment. And then it goes to, uh, seventy-five percent assessment. And then it goes to, after year five, it'll go to a, um, a full assessment. So, right now, uh, our current assessment is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But we still have a twenty-five percent, um, grant available to cover a portion of it. So, this is the last year in which we're gonna enjoy the twenty-five percent reimbursement from the state. So.
Next year we're paying full price.
You're paying full price. So, that's gonna go up, um, you know, somewhere above a hundred and fifty thousand in fiscal year twenty-six.
Okay. So, when we look at that, Chief, your opinion, what's a dispatcher making right now? Now, what, if you were gonna hire a dispatcher and staff your own dispatch.
Oh, that was costing us almost three hundred thousand dollars.
So, that was costing us three hundred thousand dollars? Eight years ago? Uh, six years ago?
Yeah, I'd say six years ago.
So, six years ago?
Yep.
So, you're probably adding another hundred thousand dollars to that now.
That's the reason we got rid of it is because of all the requirements that they are requiring now. You have to go through that dispatching.
I'm just explaining so, like, people, because they're gonna ask, well, that seems like a lot of money. Why don't we just bring our own dispatchers back?
Oh, yeah, you're talking probably triple that, I would imagine.
So, we were paying three hundred thousand dollars. Even if we turn, turn around and spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the regional dispatch, we're still saving a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And this was that, this, at the rate six years ago.
Right, yeah.
So, right now, you're probably looking at four hundred plus because you gotta remember, you gotta staff it twenty-four seven. You know, you, you can't just sit there and say, well, I'm gonna have a dispatcher there for a couple hours each day. That's not how it works. Crime doesn't just stop when your dispatcher goes home. Uh, the radio will probably stop. Crime doesn't stop. But, um, so that's why it's important to pay this. And we've been getting grants for it and, um, helping out that way. So.
Yeah, I just wanted the board to be made aware that the grant is gonna be running out, um, next year. Um, and we'll be having to pay the full assessment moving forward.
How much is the difference?
What's that?
How much is the difference?
Twenty, twenty-five percent.
And it's gonna be like a hundred and fifty-six thousand.
And it was? How much it was?
Before the disaster, you want to know?
What, before we went to a regional?
No.
Oh.
Right, you're, you're telling us.
Right now it's one seventeen.
One seventeen. And now it's gonna be?
Well, I don't know what the new rate will be in fiscal year twenty-six.
But you, you mentioned a percentage, so.
Twenty-five percent.
So, twenty-five, you, right now it's a hundred and fifty thousand. So, we're paying one seventeen. There, the state's covering twenty-five percent.
So, that's easy. You know, even if it's one sixty, we are le- you're saving more than half of what.
Oh, yeah. Chief, you had something?
So, in the past, we've always had the assessment on and we've used it. Uh, we voted to take the money that we had in the assessment and that's what we. We voted to take the money that we had in the assessment and that's what we used for the radio project. So, it was always accounted for.
Oh, interesting, okay.
It was just that we, instead of it going to, to Rutland, and because we had that grant, the grant paid Rutland, we took that money and put it towards the, the radio project. That.
Right, um, you guys got any more questions on it?
About municipal, uh, regional dispatch.
Dispatch, yeah. All right, what else?
Um, so the next page, uh, you'll notice the law department expense, um, that's the original budget number that we had prior to, uh, uh, the budget cut last year. Um, so, I'm not sure if, if that's what the board would wanna continue with or if they wanna anticipate maybe going a little bit higher.
One-twenty-five.
So, we, we learned, we, we lowered it to help out. And that probably wasn't the best decision to do because now we're.
Yeah, exactly.
In a situation, um, from, taken from that particular account. Um, because all the lawyer's fees are going up. They're going up signi- significantly, so, you know, we need to be able to address that. Um, in twenty-twenty-three, we were a hundred thousand. Twenty-twenty-four, we went down to seventy-five thousand.
And we're like on the hairy edge.
We're on, yeah. And we're probably gonna be asking for some money for.
Or digging around for.
Digging around, looking, looking underneath the seats for change.
Having a bake sale.
I like, I like Rich's idea, one-twenty-five.
Yeah, I, I think, I would rather have more in that account and not need it. Because when it comes to legal stuff, that spur of the moment and the last thing you wanna do is owe the, the attorneys money because they get their money. They're like the tax man.
Yeah.
The tax man's getting their money and the attorneys are getting their money, so.
If, uh, law firms, if they're gonna raise their rates, do they generally do it? Have they already done it, like, the beginning of the year?
Yeah, I think we just got a letter from KP Law.
They just told us that they raised theirs.
Yeah, in twenty-twenty-five, they're going up ten to fifty dollars per hour.
Oof, that's a lot, okay. So, I mean, we're already getting increases that we need to factor in.
I haven't heard anything from Merrick or Carter.
I haven't heard anything from him, no.
I'd prefer that we make the hours longer.
Instead of sixty minutes, we'll, you know, like, can only.
Seventy-five.
So, eighty minutes.
Our hours is eighty minutes.
Eighty minutes?
Eighty, ninety minutes.
Eighty minute hours?
You know, on, on average, and I, and I, I looked at, you know, on average, just to give the board a perspective. You know, on average, we're, we're looking at, we're averaging about three thousand dollars a month in KP Law. That's general, you know.
It's just general advice.
Gen- general legal advice. So, if you did three, three times, uh, three thousand times twelve, I mean, that's, it's a relatively reasonable number to be paying for legal expenses. Is, what is it around, Rich, what is it in the number?
Well, thirty-six thousand.
Thirty-six thousand, about that. So, um, you know, that's reasonable. When you get into litigation and you have to defend and you have to go to court and you're going to, um, you know, to potential trials, you know, that's where it gets pricey.
Yeah.
Yep. So, yeah.
So, one-twenty-five?
Uh, I'm good with one-twenty-five because honestly, we, all it is, is going up and up, up and up, uh, and, you know, we got, we got a lot of stuff going on. There's a lot of changes happening in town. Um, we got a lot of big projects hopefully coming on and we're gonna need legal. We're gonna need both the legal, you know, between Merrick and KP, so.
So, at a special town meeting, we can raise a budget. We can raise more money for a budget line, right?
Well, you could, you could ask for a, um, a transfer.
But you have to take it from somewhere else.
Or from free cash.
But you put it into that budget line, right? You say you wanna raise fifty thousand and put it in the law.
Right.
Can you also reduce a budget?
No, because it goes back in the general funds at the end of the year.
Yeah, just go back to the, to the general fund, yeah.
At the end of the year, it just goes back in general.
So, whatever we don't use, it's not like it just disappears. It goes into general fund.
Well, okay, so let's say, if we're in a lawsuit and it settles and, and there's, like, all the trial expenses now are, don't exist anymore.
Mm-hmm.
Could add a special, we just lower the budget amount and maybe move that money into some, something else or something?
Could use it for line item transfer for another department.
Yeah, you can, yeah, leave it for, yeah.
Okay, so you just generally leave it there, okay, all right.
And then at the end of the year?
It turns into free cash.
Right, yeah, no, I got that, yeah, I was just.
Let's do one-twenty-five.
Okay.
You good with that, sir?
Yeah, I, I, the company where I work for, it's, it's, it's not as big as the, this town and it's, we're just about that much.
Really?
Yeah.
For legal expenses.
For legal expenses, you know, medical, but, you know. I think it, for a town, it's, it's little.
Mm-hmm.
Is, that's just my opinion. I think it's little, so, one-twenty-five, it's okay.
I mean, it's really, um, it's a shot in the dark because you don't know, you know, cases may potentially settle early, they may get dragged out. One-twenty-five may not be enough.
Yeah.
Um, it's, it's, it's.
But I'd rather ask for a little more now and, and try to be prepared and then pray, hey, things resolve themselves and we work them out. But if they don't, we're gonna have money.
Yeah, we need, we need.
Yeah, we, I don't think the town.
That's, that's one account we, we probably shouldn't be touching too much with again. You know, 'cause it's not going on, down for the attorneys.
Right, I don't, I don't think the town is in a position of looking for trouble and getting in trouble. I, I just think that it will be embarrassed to, you know, if, a situation, and then we run out of money and we don't, you know, we, we, we can't defend the town.
Yeah, that's pretty bad.
Very well said, sir. You should be a selectman.
What?
All right, so what else do we have, sir? So, we're going one-twenty-five for legal.
Okay. Um, then the next change would be down to street lighting and street lighting maintenance. Uh, you know, I sat down, um, with Karen on the street lighting, um, and we looked at it and we were looking at our bills and we projected, um, and even on the increases from last year to this year, um, we still had a surplus last year, um, in that, in that line. So, you know, we thought it would be comfortable to be at seventeen thousand, a little bit of a savings there from the twenty thousand in request. Um, and then for the maintenance line, uh, we've been really good with, um, we also had a surplus last year. Um, and this new company that has been providing the services have, have been really reasonable. And we've, we went out to bid for that. We were able to get a competitive price. Um, and so, I don't, I think we can comfortably reduce that by three thousand, so that's a potential six thousand dollar savings in the lights.
Oh, that's five thousand.
Oh, five thousand, I'm sorry, a potential eight thousand savings in, um, in, in both.
Yeah, I'm good with that. I'm really happy with this company.
Yeah.
This company's been working out well.
Really good.
And you, they're very responsive. You just tell them right off the bat, hey, there's a street light out over here, they're there the next day fixing it. So, not like going back to California and try to get somebody from California to call somebody in, come to Massachusetts, to get another guy to come over here that they got. It's like.
Yeah.
That was ridiculous. Are you, you good with the streetlight company?
Yeah, yeah, they've been.
All the streetlights are lit up, yeah, they look good. I don't think we have any out in town right now. Have you noticed any?
No, usually they're hanging for a while and they're not like that anymore.
Yeah.
I think there is one on Burbank, but I just always forget to report it.
Let me know, I can have it done really quick.
They'll fix it the next day.
Yeah.
The only streetlights that are out are the ones I don't know.
That's true.
So, if anybody has any streetlights out or they notice any streetlights out that belong to Warren, um, if it's one of our streetlights, tell us what the location is and if you can get a pole number, that's better. Because a pole number will narrow it right down to which one it is, because sometimes when they go out there during the day, they don't exactly know which one it is, um, because they're not on. But if you get a pole number, let Mr. Farrar know.
They've been really good. If you give them the street address and say it's right across the driveway from this address, they still go out and fix that one.
Yeah, sure.
They do good. Thank, very happy with this. All right, um, yeah, I'm good. Are you good with that, dropping it?
Yeah.
If we're not using it, we're not using it. Are you good, sir?
Yes, sir.
So, we'll reduce the three thousand and reduce it by the five thousand.
Okay. Um, and then, then the only other ones in question, or the ones highlighted, are the liability, insurance, general liability insurance and the workers' cop insurance. I've been in, uh, in contact with our rep, uh, Joanne from Maya and they're hoping that rates will be announced for the town, specifically to the town, um, on Monday, so.
Yeah, all right.
Okay, so we should have something by then?
Yeah, so.
But these are reasonable numbers?
No, those are just carried over from last year. Yeah, so, the, I would.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they are.
They're going up.
They're gonna go up.
Yeah, but it didn't sound like they, for us, they would be too bad, right?
No, no, they, well, they gave a range, right?
Yeah.
And so, we, we don't know specifically where we're, where we'll fall within that range or the category.
So, they just, they just had a thing on the news about this, uh, and they were talking about how the rates are going way up because there's been a lot of claims in communities and they kinda spread the wealth.
Oh, yeah.
Just because we're not having a lot of claims in our community, if another community's having a lot of claims, they don't overburden them by raising theirs way up.
Yeah.
They just raise everybody up. So, we share that because when somebody else does it, we all pay for it. So, but they did talk about that and I'm like, great, more, more money we're gonna have to pay for. And I'm sorry up there with the TV because I hit the table and I know you guys hate that.
Quit banging on the table.
Yeah, I get a text message, Travis, stop hitting the table.
So, the only other thing too is to let you know that our, um, fire hydrants rental went up, um, six point five percent. But it didn't go up for the last two years.
Oh, all right, well.
But, um, precinct B, Wes Warren is not making theirs up this year. It's not going up this year.
You know a way we could fix that? If the water department falls underneath the town, just saying.
You should be a selectman.
I'd pretend if you want on the weekends.
Okay.
All right, um, so, we revisit this next Thursday?
Sure.
Yeah.
You good with that?
Now, this, this, from the changes that have gone on, uh, today, um, the minor changes that we've made today, um, the FinCom, uh, to, because all budgets were due today, the FinCom is going to, um, you know, have this updated, this version of it. We'll have a date on it, um, just for submittal purposes, for their review. But they will also be made aware that we're still waiting on numbers for insurance because they're not out yet. Um, and, and some other, uh, we're waiting on the generator, um, and some, some of those other things there. So, they'll, they'll have at least something to look at, um, because they've scheduled their meeting on Tuesday.
Okay. Yep, I'm good with that.
Yeah.
And then we can finalize it. Hopefully, we get our numbers for the insurance and we can finalize it. Yep. Next Thursday.
I'll have it in their box tomorrow morning.
Okay. Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, everybody good with the budget?
Yes, sir.
Anybody have any questions about the budget? Right. What's going on?
Are we gonna vote on this budget or are we gonna wait?
Uh, I'd say you can wait, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, we, nothing to really vote on. We made changes. We can't finalize it till we get those final numbers.
Yeah, okay.
So, next Thursday, just make sure it's put on for a vote.
Got it.
So. All right, um. Discussion impossible vote to support the two thousand twenty-four legislative priorities for small-town administrators of Massachusetts. Anticipate a vote. Mr. Farrar?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Chairman, one of the committees that I, I'm involved in, um, as being a town administrator is STEM. It's the Small Town Administrators of Massachusetts and we meet frequently to discuss, uh, legislative priorities, to discuss what's happening in other communities and how we could, you know, learn from each other. Um, and at one of our recent meetings, uh, we, we had come up with some legislative priorities as, as a collective whole. Um, and these are, have been, um, listed below. Some of them we have talked about before. Um, and some of them have been mentioned, um, in other, um, in other discussions and in other, um, events that we may have attended together. Um, and the STEM Association, um, is going o- out to all of their select boards and selectmen uh, to, uh, make them aware of the legislative priorities, uh, you know, asking the select boards to, uh, take a formal vote um, and to, you know, possibly ratify this and send this off to, uh, the legislature and to the governor um, as, as, as priorities to, uh, to small towns. One of the things that, you know, that, you know, obviously, that is important to Warren, um, is the creation of the, the Municipal Building Assistance Authority, um, similar to, uh, the School Building Authority where the state reimburses communities. You know, some communities get up to eighty percent reimbursement for, uh, school construction and, uh, school, um, rehabilitation of their buildings. Um, you know, the STEM is, is also looking to support that initiative, but on the municipal side of things so that, you know, public safety complexes, um, you know, uh, senior centers, uh, town halls, town offices, uh, could be included in, in, in that, uh, in that category.
It would help us a lot if we can get rid of that prevailing wage thing on some of our.
Sure.
Projects.
It just drives the cost.
Because that kinda drives the cost way up there.
Yeah.
You know, we can get people in there willing to do it for less, but we have to pay them the maximum amount.
So, these are, these are some topics that we had talked about. I know that we had mentioned the, this, the Municipal Building Assistance, uh, Authority. I know we talked about chapter ninety money, um, uh, you know, we, we talked about, uh, staffing and support, um, uh, administrative burdens, um, in general, um, and, and some, you know, better rural, regional support for, um, school funding formulas, um, as well as, uh, um, transportation reimbursements. So, these are some of the things. They're very similar to what, you know, other communities are looking to do as well. Um, this is some of the ones that we had highlighted and we're hoping that, um, the legislature and, and, and the governor can, um, you know, you know, really tackle, um, soon.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
What's the staffing and support for the Office of Rural Affairs? So, that office was created, but has it not been staffed?
Yeah, so, uh, that, that, that's an issue and, and, um, you know, uh.
So, it's just Ann Goby alone?
Yeah, I think she recently just got, uh, some, uh, some support staff. But, you know, that office, um, you know, requires staff, um, you know, there's a lot of small communities and, and if you're gonna address the need in, in trying to get in touch with people, um, you know, it can't just be Ann for the entire state.
Yeah.
You know, so, um, it needs realistic, if you're gonna make the investment to have it, you know, have the investment where, you know, other work can get done, you know, while Ann is talking to communities and getting things in the pipeline.
Yeah.
I like that. Create the fun, you know, create and fund the Municipal Building Assistance Authority. Because a lot of times, towns need that. That was a big thing, you know, and I know Ann was talking about that before. It'd be nice to have that, it's just similar to what's being done for schools.
Right.
So. Do you have any questions about this?
No, sir.
No, do you have anything else, sir?
I don't.
Does anybody from the public have any questions about this?
Some motion to support it?
Yeah, I, I'm good. I like it. Everything in here is.
Yeah.
It's with our, with our values, with our community. It's with our, with our values, with our community, what we're looking to do.
Yeah.
And it would help.
All right, I'll make a motion to support the 2024 legislative priorities of the Small Town Administration, Administrators of Massachusetts.
Second.
All in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
You have our support, sir.
Thank you. And all of the small-town administrators appreciate that. Thank you.
We appreciate it, though. Okay, discussion impossible vote to sign the Certificate of Substantial Completion for the School Street Phase One and Prospect Street Improvement Project, anticipated vote. So with this, I actually went over to School Street, and I talked with some of the residents, and I took a lot of photos of what's going on over there. You're gonna pull them up. So that, that was a wall from one of the residents' house, but that's an unrelated one. She was over on School Street. That was potentially hit by a plow, and we don't know who. So she's looking into that. But if you can. Move over and get away from that. That was her address. That's her house. That's the thing. So right there, the woman's actually having a lot of puddling happening in front of her house, and that's causing ice to build up. So when the puddling's there, it's not flowing down where it should be because it's coming down from, it's Richard Street?
Richardson, yeah.
Richardson.
So it's coming down from Richardson Street and kind of just sitting in front of this woman's house. So we, we need to see if we can do something with that, and I know they're gonna repave it.
That's phase two, yeah.
And resurface it, so that's coming along with their curb work. But if you go through the pictures, what was actually completed, that's again, same thing, just for the picture. So curb, you know, all the leaves and stuff are building up there. And that was just a picture of the wall going along the road. So I spent a lot of time looking at this wall because I know there was a resident that has a lot of concern with the wall. And even the woman there was a little concerned about the wall because the leaves and stuff are building up there. And, you know, that's supposed to be a sidewalk. I told her the town's responsible for taking care of that, and we will. But if you go through the pictures, that picture's right there, it looks like there's a bunch of mud packed in between the cracks of the wall. Keep on going. There's more photos of it. Again, a lot of mud, looks like it's stuck in the cracks. And spaces that were in there, significant gaps, which you're gonna have a little bit of that as he moves around. It's locking blocks, but I'm just showing you.
Yes, actually, the gaps don't matter because they're locked together.
They're interlocking blocks, so.
And I think they go, there's supports that go down through them, too. They're not going anywhere.
No, they're not going anywhere.
Well, you know, the, the, the ground, and when it changes temperature, it moves, so.
Right.
So the, the wall doesn't break. It allows for some movement.
That's another picture of the wall. These are little things, like details like this. You look like they clipped the bottom of the fence, but they left the little pieces, the sharp pieces hanging off the bottom of the fence, where they're at hand level. So if a little kid grabbed that, you know, putting his hand up there, he can grab that sharp piece. So keep on going. There's another one. Just keep on going. There's a bunch of rock that's just sitting up on top of the wall that probably should have been cleaned off. There's no need to have a bunch of rocks standing on the wall.
I don't know what, I mean, could somebody, like, could kids have put that there, or somebody put that?
No, that was from the project. That's from the street because the same rock is in the street. There's some pieces, pieces of the fence that just left there on the wall. And again, that, that's not actually clipped in. You see the two pieces where they join together? One's up instead of, and it's opened up. So if somebody sticks their hand there, they can get snagged on that. They really should have gone, and then, again, look at the hook. You know, that, that's all stuff, all the leaves that have built up on there that are just thrown up there. And, and there's a lot of those, the, the little dangling pieces of the fence. So it just, there was no real detail in the cleaning up of that part, of that fence. There's a lot of issues with areas of the fence that could be dangerous if somebody would have reached up on that wall. And I just don't want anybody to get hurt, so they need to take care of that. And honestly, I think the board should do a site walk before we approve this and look at these things to get them addressed. If you guys are good with that? That's a part of the wall where, I know they lock together and everything, but I don't know if you would have, like, maybe an epoxy there, because that's actually where you have the fence ledge, and there's actually a pretty good gap that you can see right through there. So I would just like to know more about that, if that's good, it's how, how it's supposed to be.
It could be quite, you don't live with an expansion joint.
Right.
So it'll contract with the weather and that.
Yeah.
It just seems, because if you get ice in there, my worry is if the ice builds up in there, as it expands and contracts, the ice, the ice is gonna put a lot of pressure on that block, and it could crack it. And with that post right there, because there's only a little bit of piece there, it's most likely gonna crack where that post is and causing problems for the fence.
But the way this is now, it should drain out. You shouldn't get that.
It should.
Or if you epoxy it, then you're gonna have something for the water to sit on.
And, and I'd like to know that from them, what their argument is, if it's better to just leave it open? Or if it's something where we should put an epoxy there to prevent water or ice building up in that gap? You know? And just head off these problems before we sign off and saying, you're good. You know? And then if you go through this, was that it?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. So there are a lot of little details that we need to look at before we sign off on this. So I think we should table this.
Sure.
Till next Thursday. And if you guys have some time on Thursday, we could do a site walk. You wanna do that?
Do you wanna see if we can get the contractor there, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, get Bill.
They put through like a punch list.
Yeah.
Well, they did provide a punch list, yeah.
Well, they provided their punch list, but I, I wanna.
Yeah, you can generate your own.
We, we wanna walk through and say, hey, this, this is a concern for us. You know, and point out things. The fencing, that's obvious stuff. You know, before they walked away, they should have had all that little stuff buttoned up. And it just seems slapped up there, so.
I can call, I can call Bill tomorrow and see if, next Thursday, if he can get A. Martins and Sons and himself available for next Thursday. If they're not available for next Thursday, do you wanna shoot for the following Thursday?
Yeah, but I, I don't wanna sign off on it till.
Right, right. I mean, we'll, we'll tell them. Yeah, we'll tell them.
Yeah.
That, you know, it's not, not gonna happen, it's not gonna be signed off until we do a walk.
I, I would call Chris, too.
Call Chris, okay.
Are you good with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
You good with that, sir?
Yes, sir.
So what time would you like to do next Thursday?
Maybe do the afternoon?
Are you available any time in the afternoon? When, when are you available? Because you probably have the harder schedule. I'm off that day.
Well, if we call it in advance, I may save the spot. So whatever's convenient for Rich.
Generally, afternoons are a little better, so maybe like two o'clock.
Two o'clock, could you?
Uh, two forty-five. I have to pick up the kids at two fifteen.
Oh, okay.
Unless you wanna do earlier.
Yeah, later's better, but.
Later's better?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, what do you do for two forty-five, or three o'clock?
Yeah, just make it three o'clock.
Three o'clock, good?
Yes, sir.
So three o'clock Thursday, we'll do a site walk?
Two, that's the fifteenth, right?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, very good. I'll call them tomorrow.
And we'll table this till next week, the vote. And actually, I would like them to, whatever we decide on, the repair's done before we do vote.
Okay.
So, but we, we can put it on the agenda next week, just in case, because if they fix it that day, fine.
So I went there today and took a bunch of pictures, too.
Okay.
I did, what I did notice is that a lot of, a lot of private properties dumped their water into the street. And that's one of the reasons why the leaves are washed out and stuck over there.
Yeah. Well, that'll be fixed when there's, the curbs are put in. When they do that, the surfacing of the road, that's gonna probably help, and hopefully it will help with the puddling. But these are things we just wanna note that are our problems at this point. And we also wanna make sure whatever's being done, because those people's driveways are right at the bottom of Richardson Street, and we'd wanna make sure that the water is not being directed down their driveway into their yard.
In, in other towns, it's, it's, the building department works, you know, so your, your water stays in your property. Yeah, to, to avoid that.
And that, that was one of the comments that a resident had is they believe some of the drainage issues are because one of the residents actually has some PVC piping going out from their yard into the road and draining off their property into the road. So that's probably gonna have to be addressed.
Against bylaws.
Yep.
What?
It's against the bylaws.
Yeah.
So.
So it could be from gutters, it could be from a sump pump, it could be, you know, any of them.
But they shouldn't be doing that.
No.
It's right there.
Yeah, there you go. There's the pipe, right, yeah. And, yeah, you can see all the water coming down.
Yeah, that's probably a sump pump or something, right?
Go to the picture on the right.
It's probably the melting snow, because that looks like it's a gutter pipe.
Go, go to the picture on the right, you will see all the water that it's on the road.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's, they can't do that. So, if you wanna show us. Who's, um, is that?
Where's the plate? Oh, yeah.
Is that BJ's jurisdiction to send a letter?
Yeah.
So we're gonna have to have to do that. So we'll check it out next week. Take some photos, and then use your photos and tap her.
Yep.
Send the letter.
Yeah, it's three o'clock, right, on the fifteenth, right?
Three o'clock on the fifteenth.
Right, it's on.
So. Just make sure, note that in our calendars.
Did you see me taking a picture of this thing? It's my calendar.
Just let us know if the contractor can meet us there or not.
Yeah.
And you're gonna have to post this meeting.
As a site visit.
Site visit. There's no.
Voting.
No voting, no nothing. It's not open to the public, because the public wants to walk by or whatever, hey, whatever. But it's not one of those things where we're gonna hold a big presentation or anything like that. We're just going through and look at it.
Yeah, just a site visit.
Yep.
Got it.
Okay, guys, good with that, and ready to move on?
Yep.
Okay, discussion and change, the senior work-off application due date, anticipated vote. So whoever requests to change the date?
Yes, the assessor has requested to change the date because it gives her enough time to get all of the information for her budget to go to this date for the overlay.
Okay.
So she'd like it to be November first.
So what is this piece of paper we're looking at here, though?
That was just something that she gave me that gave it more information about the program. But we do all of it except for we just need to change the date.
So what's the current date?
December thirty-first.
So this is making them respond quicker.
And have the hours completed by then, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but no, this is the application for the next year.
For the next year, okay.
So like, we only had one application, so she said she only had to figure in her overlay seven hundred and fifty dollars for that application. So this is the application for the next year.
Right, okay.
Okay. Yeah, I'm good with it.
So if you wanna apply, you get your thing in by November first for the next year.
Instead of December thirty-first.
Yeah, as long as we make sure everybody knows, and we let the senior center know.
Will we just update our application to reflect?
On the, yeah, yeah, on the website.
Especially people who are already doing the program, right?
So we only got one this year.
Yeah, but there may be another people in the past, right? Anybody who's taken it in the past couple of years.
Yeah.
Or taken advantage of it, I would let them.
When do the hours have to be completed by?
Still for the year, right?
Yeah, it need, they need to be completed by also November first.
Okay, so, so we'll, we'll, we'll have them, you know, application.
Coincide.
Yeah, coincide, okay. All right.
Okay.
I mean, she'll, she'll give me until the fourteenth, but she would like it the first.
Well, we can, we can both own.
Are you good with that?
Yes.
You good?
Yes, sir.
Any questions about it? Anybody have any questions about that? Changing it?
Okay.
Do we need a motion, or we just like? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to change the application deadline date and the date for submitting hours to November first for the senior work-off program.
Second.
All in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay, discussion and appointment for the Town Levy Compliance Committee, Jeremy Olson, James McKeon, Jerry Mallett, for a three-year term. Okay, you guys have any questions about that?
They did not put Adam on there, but I put Adam on the sheets, but since I didn't put him on here, we can't vote on him tonight.
Well, some of these, you have Town Levy Compliance slash Safety, and then Town Levy Compliance Committee. You didn't do slash Safety?
No, okay, that's a screw. I'll fix that.
All right, so Safety. Okay, all right.
Chief, anybody? Yes, chief?
Should it say Gerald instead of Jerry? I don't know if that's.
Gerald, Mallett.
It does say Gerald.
All right, I didn't know if it mattered or not.
Yeah, it does say Gerald. You already have, yours is right here.
Okay, so I'll make.
Make sure you say Gerald.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to appoint Jeremy Olson, James McKeon, Gerald Mallett to the Town Levy.
Compliance.
Compliance slash Safety Committee.
For a three-year.
For a three-year term.
Second.
All in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. You're on another committee. No, you're not getting paid more.
And then we'll do Adam next week?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, warrants and bills, anticipated vote.
All right, I'll make a motion to pay the following warrants, number forty-two payroll, sixty-one thousand nine ninety-one sixty-seven. Number forty-three vendor, eight hundred fifteen thousand nine forty-four and ten cents. Number forty-four payroll, fifty-one thousand two hundred thirty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Bills?
Make a motion to pay the following bills, Northeast IT, thirty-five hundred thirty-one dollars. Myrick, Myrick O'Connell, twenty-eight hundred twenty-three dollars and ninety-two cents. Verizon, hundred and forty-two dollars and eighty-seven cents. C two MA Adams.
Oh, hold on.
What?
Hundred and forty-two or hundred and forty?
Hundred and forty and eighty-seven cents.
Yeah, I said a hundred and forty-two. Hundred and forty dollars and eighty-something cents.
Can we check the tape? C two MA Adams, seven hundred eighty-five dollars and fifty-one cents. Buffon Cleaning, twenty-three hundred fifty-five dollars. WB Mason, nine twenty-four. Marlin Leasing, eleven hundred seven dollars and twenty-three cents. Town of Rutland, seventy-three thousand six hundred eighty-eight dollars and fifty cents. Is that dispatch?
That's the assessment.
Yeah, okay. National Grid, eighteen hundred fifty-four dollars and ninety-nine. National Grid, eighteen hundred fifty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufray, aye, the motion passes unanimously. Yeah, seeing Town of Rutland, like, what are we, just being nice to Rutland and giving them seventy-five thousand dollars?
That's the regional dispatch, so that's at fifty percent. Next year it's going to tw- fiscal year twenty-five, it'll go to twenty-five percent.
Yeah.
And in twenty-six, it's full gold.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, so minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for January fourth, twenty twenty-four, January eleventh, twenty twenty-four, the six PM meeting. And January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Stop.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufray, aye, the motion passes unanimously.
Not doing the last one.
So I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from January eleventh, twenty twenty-four at ten AM.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
David Dufray, aye. And Mr. Bellis abstains because he wasn't there, and the motion passes unanimously. Okay, uh, town administrator report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, I just wanted to give the board some updates on some of the, uh, happenings that have been happening this week. Um, obviously, uh, we have been in contact and we have started the interview process for the position of town accountant. Um, and we have a second interview scheduled for next week as well as of the following week. Um, and so we're gonna hopefully, uh, be wrapping that process up. Um, the week of the, um. The week of the nineteenth, um, we'll be wrapping that process up. We'll have our last interview on the twenty-second, um, of, of February. Um, we've had some, some pretty, um, uh, well, well, uh, established, uh, people that have been applying. Um, that have some background, um, in our, from other communities, so we're really excited about, um, our prospects that we have there. Um, as, um, as indicated before, uh, we had, um, police officer, uh, interviews. I sat in on the interviews with the chief last week, we had interviews. Uh, today we had additional interviews, five interviews today. Uh, we had, what, four, uh, four last week, four last week? Two showed up out of the four, um, so, um.
All five showed up this time.
All five showed up today. Um, very, uh, good candidates today. We had, um, individuals from other departments. Uh, and so it, uh, it was a little bit of a competitive process today. And, uh, we're still, uh, reviewing those and, uh, I'll be getting with the chief next week and hopefully we'll have some recommendations for you. Um, uh, very soon. Um, I do wanna update the board on, on training. Um, I have reached out to All-in-One Health. Um, All-in-One Health is, is located in the Boston area. They have done work and they have partnered with Maya, our insurance provider. And All-in-One Health, uh, provides training, um, for municipalities. On dealing with, uh, challenging people, uh, and ways in which you can provide. Uh, the best customer service when dealing with, uh, challenging people. Um, and they have experience. Um, and the best part about it is, is that they'd be willing to come out here and do it for free. So, um, it's a, it's about a two-hour, um, training. Uh, that, uh, that typically, um, uh, runs about two hours, uh, for staff. Uh, we would just have to identify the logistical part of it. Um, I would need some help and some guidance from the board. Um, if we're looking to do this for the entire staff, um, you know, whether it be this, the entire building here, in the senior center. Um, in sewer and highway and, um, in fire or in police or, however the board wants to handle that. We would have to, um, you know, have, um, you know, either do it in, in, in shifts. Or possibly just segregate a day and say, you know, maybe we possibly look at, you know. Um, closing the building down for two hours early on a day, um, you know, during the week. So that the training can, that people in the staff can have that. Um, so that's something that, you know, um, I'll need to work with the board on as to how they would like to see that happen, um, just logistically. Um, I could probab- you know, they, they have done shifts, um, before, um, but the easiest way.
When you do that, you, you get like three people here.
Right.
Five people here, twenty people here.
Right, right.
You know?
They said that they would be willing to do two shifts, so, uh, you know, it would have, still have to be some, some overlap there and I don't know.
Would they do another shift another day?
Yeah, they could.
So what we could do is do it mandatory for one day and then anybody that can't meet the mandatory day can do a makeup.
Makeup mandatory day.
Wait a minute, if it's mandatory, then they can't miss it.
Well, some people might have, well, I have a medical appointment, things like that.
But if it's mandatory.
Well, it's mandatory for our employees, but if you've got an excuse, you got an excuse, you know?
Like, somebody may be out on a vacation day or something.
You're not gonna pull them in on their vacation, you know?
Um, but, um, you know, there, it, it's, it, I, I looked them up on the web, they're, they're, they're very reputable. They, they've, they've done a lot of stuff with, um, with towns before. They ha- they deal with a lot of the, 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 uh, mental health issues and dealing with challenging people. They have experience, they're, they're, they've done presentations before for, uh, the MMA. Um, they're, they're qualified and, you know, since we are, we do get our insurance through Maya. Um, the gentleman that I had spoken to, um, uh, Michael Stewart. Um, you know, they would be willing to come out and he'd be willing to give the, you know, the, the class, um, you know. As part of our plan that we have with Maya, so it wouldn't cost the town with anything.
Would Maya give us her?
Well, yeah, there, there, there may be even a, a, an incentive there, or, you know, a training credit there too.
So my one thought with having two classes, it's probably a good idea, but, um, it might be good to figure out, 'cause sometimes. If, if it's a class where you just sit and watch presenter, who cares? But sometimes they'll break people into groups to try and solve problems and it sound like something like this, that might be true.
Yeah.
So the more people there, the better.
Right.
So it might be better to do.
Right, and they offer, they offer the virtual one, but I said I, I really prefer an in-person.
Yeah.
Um, and he said he would rather do an in-person. So I, I really wouldn't want to have the guy come out here, I don't think he'll come out here three times for us. Maybe I can get him twice.
Yeah.
Um, you know.
I think if we at least offer two.
Yeah.
Because you gotta offer a makeup, we'll, we'll schedule one day, everybody needs to be here this day and, and do it. Um, and I would say for all town employees. You know, all departments, because it's gonna benefit everybody in some way. And it puts a standardized, it starts us with standardized training for the commu- the town. Um, for all our employees, 'cause this leads to other thing, we did the first, first aid CPR. That's great, now we're doing the, dealing with difficult people training. Um, that's something we should be having, um, because we all deal with people we might not always agree with and. Some people could be very difficult, but we need to give them respect. And sometimes that gets, you, you have to have some training to be able to understand that sometimes. 'Cause we all can't just spur off and say what we think. As much as we'd like to, it's not, not conducive.
Would this involve police and fire?
Well, that, that's the, well, it could, it could theoretically definitely involve fire. Uh, police, you know, that would have to be a discussion that I, you know, we could have with the chief on, you know, working out, you know, whether or not the union would wanna participate in this. I, I'm not sure on that, so.
I think it would be beneficial to them, um, but because they are unionized, we'd have to run this past the union, correct?
I think I can make them go, it's just the funding issue.
Well, everybody attending it, it's gonna be paid.
Right.
We can't make you go to training and not pay you.
Yeah.
If he has officer off, he would have to pay them, you know, to come in in overtime.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Let's take it out of your pay.
If, if the board wants, if the board wants to, and see if we can include police, then I certainly, we can, um, see if we can make that happen.
What, what do you guys actually have right now for dealing with con- conflict?
De-escalation training?
How often do they do it?
That's on the same lines?
How often do they do it?
It depends with the in-service and what programs they have.
So just in-service?
Yep. What classes NPTC has.
So, Jim, maybe ask All-in-One.
Yeah.
Right, do they, do they feel this is useful for police or fire?
Yeah.
They're on a different level.
Or is it a customer service type thing?
Yeah.
Well, you still serve in a customer, because the public is the customer, but.
But if they get somebody I read.
You're already dealing with somebody, yeah.
They have a different. Yeah.
I think the customer will react different, looking at a uniform.
Hmm, yeah.
Well, if you're already providing the training now, but see if it's something that they would like to attend. And see if it's comparable.
Okay.
Because if they're already doing the training and they don't wanna do it, fine, but if they do and they wanna get two hours. Four hours. 'Cause they, minimum of four hours for any calling.
Okay.
They have to come to the mandatory and the next.
Well, you only got three guys, so.
Just schedule them all for that time and then they're already here.
And if anybody disagrees with the training, they can arrest them.
Yeah. And then, um, could we invite the water departments?
I don't see why you couldn't. I don't see why you couldn't.
We can't pay them, though.
No.
The water departments.
It'd be on their own.
But if they wanna attend it.
It's not like we're paying for the training, where we, you know, if we add an extra person.
We could, we could, we could invite the libraries too.
Yeah, it would, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
They might be interested in.
Um, so, you know, um.
But all, all municipal employees.
It's required.
Required, yeah.
And I think they need to have a really good excuse why they can't come to that particular meeting.
Right.
Because, and then the other thought that I had is if you have one that can't come, you're gonna have a whole nother day for that one person.
Well, yeah, we'll have to see about that, 'cause it's not worth it.
Yeah.
Maybe it could be recorded?
Well, they, they, they could do that as well.
And then that person could just watch it, that's their mandatory.
Yeah, let, let, let's just deal with that when it comes.
Yeah.
Um, let's focus on the two, the, the training and the makeup day, the makeup training right now.
And, 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 and.
And if you, if, if somebody can't make the original day, then they need to be at the makeup day.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Because honestly, I, virtual is great, but we all done virtual training, we all know, we just sit there and go, click, 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 test. Alright, good, I get, I made the minimum. Yeah, or you listen to the videos and you're like, yeah, wake me up when it's done.
Oh, yeah.
You know?
I don't. I don't.
Well, thank you, you're the only one on the planet that does.
Yeah, exactly.
So we, um, you know, I mean, if the board wants to, um, I mean, if the board has a preference as to when they would like to have it done. You know, mar- you know, how much time do you?
Well, you gotta give people time.
Yeah.
And I definitely wouldn't go into the summer months because everybody's gonna stop planning vacations.
No, I was thinking maybe end of March.
Yeah, April, something like that.
April.
Well, look at when school's going on vacation.
Right, right, right.
You don't wanna do it when school is going on vacation, because you do that and, yeah.
It's probably the third week of April.
I can look at the school calendar.
So I, I would, I, we know there's no school vacations in March.
March, right.
I don't have anything for April, what would it be, April vacation week? Fifteenth or the twenty-second?
Probably the fifteenth, I would guess, right?
It's the third week.
Let, let's, let's plan for end of March.
Yeah, okay.
This way we don't cut into any vacation times or anything, it gives people plenty of time, 'cause you're giving them.
More than a month.
More than a month notice for the training. So, yeah. And I don't wanna keep on kicking this can down the road, because then you schedule, look at March and they're like, oh, can I do it in June?
Yeah.
No. So let's, you good with end of March?
Yes, sir.
Okay, end of March, yes.
And just let people know it's paid. We gotta pay them for coming. Chief, check on your officers.
Yeah. I was just seeing if they're, they're on vacation.
Oh. Alright, anything else?
So, yeah, so, um, uh, FY twenty-five budgets were due today, we've gotten departments responses. We're gonna be going through them, um, they're gonna be, uh, transmitted to the FinCom, um, next week. Uh, FinCom's gonna be meeting, um, and, and holding their meetings. I think their first meeting is on the thirteenth of, of next week at three thirty in the afternoon. Um, the, uh, One Stop for Growth is opening up, uh, their, uh, next round of grants. Um, for expressions of interest, they're opening them up tomorrow. Uh, it's gonna last, they usually have them out there for thirty or, or forty days, it's not required, but it is encouraged for towns to submit. Um, in, you know, they have mass, mass works, um, grants that, that deal with infrastructure and roadworks and. Um, they have mass housing, uh, for housing initiatives, uh, in communities. Um, they have planning services, although we have a lot of planning stuff that's already going on right now. Um, so if there's, you know, uh, an interest or a, a project, a priority. Um, I will certainly be talking with Jeremy, um, early next week. Um, and trying to get a list of, you know, different roadworks or construction things that he's got in the pipeline.
See if anything falls under for the senior, senior on center two. Maybe there's something we can do for the senior center or parks.
Yeah, I'll see if, if there's anything under there, it's usually, um, that's, those are different grants, but I will check for that. Um, and then finally, um, I put together a, a new form. And a, um, a letter that is being, that I sent out to the capital planning committee members. Uh, to get updated, um, if they're okay with it, and it's going out to all department heads. Um, that is going to, uh, be their request, uh, for sending requests to the capital planning committee. In anticipation of the FY twenty-five budget. Those requests, um, are gonna be due back March twelfth. Uh, hopefully we'll get the letter out by Monday, uh, the twelfth. Um, so they'll have an entire month, uh, to get their requests, um, you know, written up.
So we're gonna look at, for something like that, if we're gonna do that, window replacement for this building too. What that, we probably should look at what it's gonna cost us to do that, um, because we know that's coming up.
Yeah.
Because that's one of our big problems with all this.
Oh, yeah.
Damage before it gets too, too far along and I'd like to at least put something out there that we can stop.
That's on the radar.
That's on, it's on the radar, it's, it's a major project, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
And we know it's gonna cost us a lot of money because the asbestos corking, that has to be abated.
Okay, and, um, that's, that's all I have for my report at this time.
Okay, do you have any questions?
I do not.
No, sir.
Very good, um, so new business. Um, do you have any new business?
I'll just say the, uh, highway department was working on the water in, under, uh, the underpass. So they, um, they don't know why the water is there, but they basically built a little channel. From where it's bubbling up into the drain on the west side, I guess that would be of the bridge. So it should be dry and then Jeremy says, you know, once the weather gets better, then they'll try and do some more work. They may just extend that drain to go to both sides. Um, so it'll take care of any future water too.
It was, it was dry.
Yeah, it was dry when I drove through there. Then they closed it off and they have the two cones there, which probably aren't there right now, because when people are driving through there at night. Those cones are probably getting dragged somewhere. Because you come around the corner and they're right there.
It's a real pain when the temperature's low, 'cause it ices up and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I've gone sideways over it.
Even when there's no weather, they still have, every morning they go and sand it.
So.
Driving twenty miles under the speed limit made you go sideways?
Yeah.
She get a Subaru, get rid of that Bronco, get a Subaru.
Yeah, I was thinking that, the other day I had to pull two Subarus out of the train. Um, nothing wrong with a Subaru, I had Subaru before, so.
And then the other thing, um, I mentioned this to you at one point, is, um, maybe doing, uh, like a honorary citizen of Warren. Thing for Chris Dumphy, hopefully he's not listening, so. But, um, cause he's done a ton of work and he's, has retired, but he's still doing some work for us.
He, he's not really retired.
Kinda, you know, sort of.
He's retired in theory.
But at some point, give him a plan.
Yeah.
And I was thinking of looking at like Amazon for like a key, you know, like you give him a key to the town or something goofy like that.
That'd be cool.
So, um, if you guys are.
Could probably go to one of those kiosks, have his name, or key to Warren.
Yeah.
Put it on it.
Yeah, I'll look around if you're, you're okay with that.
Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea, you know? Again, we need to stop honoring our residents and, you know, these residents that are doing really good. You know, employees of the year and stuff like that, or, you know, resident, you know, resident of the year. You know, I see a lot of pictures on the wall from like fifteen years ago.
Yeah.
But nothing's recently.
Right, yeah.
So.
Stuff, right?
It's like all these things, like even that, the honor board for all the selectmen or the selectman names. Um, we have all the selectmen's names up there from the times they were here, but nothing in the past.
When does that list stand?
Fifteen years.
Nineteen seventy nine.
So we haven't had something since nineteen seventy nine recognized?
I actually asked Karen to come up with the list from two thousand till now.
Mm-hmm.
But I guess you're gonna have to.
Nineteen seventy nine apparently, okay.
Yeah, I had her come up with the list cause I thought, you know, we talked about the bells, when the bells went off and stuff like that. And it would be good to know who was on the board back then, maybe to ask.
Okay, they're in, not in order. I found two fifteen. Twenty, year two thousand and fifteen.
So it's ten years ago.
Ten years ago.
You already got it done then.
Well, I'll go back over and look at them.
Yeah, yeah, just, yeah, give it a double check.
They should be in order.
Well, this one is.
Okay, so that's something we should do. And then.
I have the black frames.
Okay. Yeah, you did. You get all those nice frames. Alright, um, and then again, again, recognizing people and I think you guys recognize your police officer of the year or something? They do firefighter of the year, right?
Yeah, you do that. It was something that Lieutenant Early and I have been actually recently kicking around.
I think it's a good idea.
The fire department maybe there.
Build them around.
Oh, like, yeah, like at Salem's or something, right? Yeah.
You good? Alright. Um, anything else, sir?
No.
No more new business?
No, no, no more new business.
Nothing here.
No new business, Ms. Rowe?
Nope.
Okay, you got nothing. Um, old business, any old business?
Grit screw?
Um, it's an operation. It's, it's running.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, um.
Very good. Oh, it was making like a grinding noise.
Yeah, there was, uh, a grinding noise. It's worked better when there's more grit, so there was, there wasn't enough grit.
So we need more grit in our system.
Yeah, that's the long and short of it.
So we need the people in town to eat more fiber.
Yeah.
Just don't overwhelm the system.
Yeah, not too much fun.
There's plenty of capacity in the system.
Move from, was it Taco Tuesday to Taco Thursday too?
Yeah. Have an extra banana tomorrow morning.
So it is an operation. Uh, there was some adjustments since the last time we had, uh, talked about it, um, by the contractor. And, and the chief operator seems to be fine with, with, uh, it working.
Okay.
Sounds good. Alright, anything else?
No.
Alright, any old business, sir?
No, sir.
There was something on the radar. Oh. The, um, ti- training simulator. Where's that stand now? Did you get anybody trained to start running them through classes?
Yeah, we, uh, probably been a month, but we were, we've been going up there. Chris and I went up there. We, we s- we're trying to unload our, the Massachusetts, um, qualification course in there.
Okay.
And, um, we hit a snag, but then we got in the company, we sent it to the company, they sent it back, so we've been up there playing around with it and we got it to work.
Okay.
So now we have that up there too as well, uh, that program that we could run.
So that is something we should probably invite.
Yeah, we were gonna do a picture.
Todd and Jake over and let's have a get together. And you guys run some scenarios and maybe let them see it too.
I know the trial board also wanted to be included in that because they painted the room.
Oh, yeah, well.
Yeah. Maybe we could get, invite them too. They did more than that. They helped me move all the stuff out of there.
The stuff out of there, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That was a bigger job than painting it.
So if we could set up something where we can get, you know, Jake Oliver and Todd Smoller over to see what these grants do and, how we apply them and how beneficial they are to the community for helping with training and stuff, then we can do something like that.
Okay.
You good with that, chief?
Yeah, we fucked it up and that's, we just never.
Yeah, but that's why we have old business. We follow up with old stuff that we talked about.
That we can't remember.
We can't remember, but, yes, that was one of them. So there was that and then also, um, the, still wanna do the thing for the historical society and doing those bins on the second floor. So we need to keep on that, keep that on our radar, doing the display cabinets.
Yeah.
For historical. And then.
I was gonna say, I just heard the radiators making noise. Do we get those bleated?
Yeah, we're gonna have to take a look at that. I got it called BG.
Yeah, cause they're pumping air through the system.
Mm-hmm.
Just steam.
Mm-hmm.
They're not working. We're probably wasting more energy.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Cause heating up steam, right? That's how it works. Got our contractor here.
The ones in the mildew room don't make that noise.
It's probably cause there's no water in it at all.
Yeah, it could just depend where it is in the system, right?
Yeah, it could be just air in this particular section and they just need to bleed it out.
Mine did that last year and they came in and bled it.
Yeah.
And it was fine after that, so this probably just needs to be.
Yeah. Alright, you know, we'll just have them check the system, make sure that, you know, we obviously know this one's a problem. Um, but hopefully they can bleed all the lines and get it running up the park.
I'll call them next week.
Alright, and then, um, yeah, that's all I got for old business. Um, correspondence, uh, from Parks Department, you have correspondence?
I think this is just the report for the town report.
It is?
Yeah.
That isn't what she said.
Yeah.
They're gonna celebrate the one hundredth anniversary. Is it kinda like a report in the news?
Well, they do, um, find deals at our tar, tag seal, we transfer, transform the Shepherd Building, Jim, into three nights of haunted fun.
Yeah, this is just, this is what's gonna come in.
Yeah, it's just town report.
Town report.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so, yeah, they did a great job. Okay, Comcast, um, record of complaints.
So this is just per the contract. They notify, uh, the town, um, on complaints that they have received. And their corrective measures that they have taken. This is for twenty twenty three?
They received one complaint.
No, zero complaints.
Yeah, zero, yeah, there's zero complaints in that.
And they resolved them all in a day.
Yeah, they get no complaints and.
And then they, uh, give you, uh, a list of all the dates of service interruption in twenty twenty three.
Okay. Why do they go from March to February to September? And then June, and then September, and then June, and then March? Don't they know how to put things in order? If you could just go through January.
You would think so.
Sort your reports correctly out of your.
That's my complaint.
Yeah.
File complaint with them because they can't sort reports correctly. Alright, so we're good with that. And then we also received, um, an open meeting law, um, complaint. Um, from a resident because of some stuff on Facebook. Um, that is not on the agenda for this week, but we will add it to the agenda next week to address, um, for the open meeting law. Um, complaint, okay? Guys, good with that?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Good with that? So just make sure that gets added to the agenda for next week. Okay, okay, comments and concerns? Any comments and concerns?
Uh, I have none.
I received a message that it, it's hard to listen on Facebook.
Oh, which is the streaming from cable?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, well, Jim said that, that halfway through it, the sound is gone.
Oh, really?
Well, right now, somebody's listening, watching our meeting on, on Facebook, speaking of Facebook, and says it's hard to, to listen.
Okay, so Travis, people having a hard time listening on Facebook? Um, so you're aware of that?
Uh, yeah, it's, uh, it's something we're aware. The problem is the, uh, internet bandwidth in the building, um, cause we're, I think, what'd we say? We're at fifteen meg, ten megs upload. And so like I just looked right now, our speed, we're getting like five, so between Zoom and us running, there's not enough bandwidth. Doing, so it winds up kinda becoming choppy.
Maybe we should start looking at that too because.
I did get some preliminary stuff on that.
Cause the bandwidth is very slow.
Yeah, so currently we have on our plan, the, the download speed is twenty five, uh, megabytes per second. The upload speed is ten megabytes per second and we're currently at a yearly cost of one thousand seven hundred twenty dollars. Um, for, for, for that plan. Right now they are offering a, a special. Uh, where you could upgrade, uh, for, and get into a two-year contract with Comcast. For.
Your first, firstborn child and everything else?
Right, right. So a two-year agreement, we're currently not in agreement, but a two-year agreement, uh, you'd be paying somewhere around, uh, a hundred and fifty-two dollars a month, which is about ten dollars more. We're paying a hundred and forty-three dollars a month. Um, and that would get you download speeds at a hundred, upload speeds at twenty-five. Um, and then there's another plan where there's a download speed of two fifty and an upload speed of twenty-five. And that'll get you for a two-year commitment, a hundred and eighty-two dollars a month. Um, and then the, the top of, the next top one, um, would be download of fif- of five hundred megabytes per second. And an upload speed of thirty, uh, and then you're at, in the two-year agreement, uh, two hundred and thirty-two dollars a month approximately. Uh, so that's about a hundred dollars more, a little bit more than a hundred dollars more, a little less than a hundred dollars more than what we're paying now.
This is, can I just say this is terrible? I think these are their business plans.
These are the business plans.
So I pay about what we pay now, like a hundred and forty or somewhere. And I told you today I did a test. I got a seven fifty up and forty down.
Yeah, same I, same, same.
This, this is ridiculous.
I just did a test, twenty-four down, three down.
This is crazy.
But this is, I guess we have to buy in, under this business plan. You know, I, I will ask them, I have a.
Well, because it's business, they charging us a lot more than we would for this.
Basically what a boil sound too. They, you know, they consider it, it's a business, so you gotta go on a business plan, which is automatically, you know, triple the price.
So what, what about Whip City?
Yeah, we, we need to.
Um, so, um, you know, Whip City, um, in, 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 when you guys signed the letter for Verizon too.
Yeah.
Um, Verizon is looking, if they were to get that grant, that Fios grant, then they would be looking to lay in, you know, Fi- Fi- Fios to town. Whip City, obviously, you know, that's certainly an option. They would also have to go along with a grant as well from the state. Um, and the town would have, you know, a significant upfront cost to, to make that investment, you know, millions of dollars.
But even if we do with Fios, because we get much better speeds with Fios, but how much is it gonna cost us for doing that though?
Well, it shouldn't cost us anything because.
Nothing for infrastructure, yeah. Nothing for infrastructure, just, I don't know what their monthly billing.
Right.
Yeah, Whip City's gonna cost us directly because we're building our own internet service, so. We put the money in, but we're gonna get the money back.
The town owns it.
Yeah. Maybe, can we reconnect with that?
Sure.
Uh, it sort of fell by the wayside after our site visit there and stuff, so. I mean, the.
Yeah, cause people, it's still interesting. And if we can get the cost down for all our residents.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You know? And, and this, this could potentially be paying for itself by what we charge. You know, it could be beneficial for us because Comcast and all of them, it just keep on going up on their prices and it's getting way, way difficult to, to be able to get internet, you know, and everybody's using internet now. And when we're spending that much for basically dial-up, you know, it, that's sad.
Yeah.
And it's just because we gotta be charged business rate.
And there's no competition.
And that's.
Comcast is here, that's the only game in town. If we had Whip City in, and if we had Verizon, people would have three vendors to choose from.
Well, I, the first representative that I spoke to from Verizon, and I'm still, I'm, I'm going to get a hold of our Verizon rep. And, and probably the reason why the Verizon rep hasn't been hounding me since I started is because of the reason that I got of an explanation from the gentleman that I spoke to on the phone. He said that the high-speed broadband is, is not available in, in, in Warren. Um, and so the infrastructure's not there and so, and, and so voice over IP phones would have a problem, you know, if you don't have that high bandwidth, um, you know, type of deal, so.
Well, that's gonna be coming up too because that's another issue. All our phones are aging here.
Right.
And they're breaking down. We can't get new ones.
But that's the thing, that, see, you told me that today, that he said that, and that's complete BS. Uh, if I have seven fifty down, that's high-speed internet and we have a fiber line going into this building. I, it doesn't make any.
But that's why I, I think, I, I, I asked, you know, the, the representative that I spoke to, I said, well, jeez, do you have a, you know, a person that I can talk to? Who's our rep in the area? Because every, every rep in the area, you know, has territory and, and I finally got the guy's information today. And I will call him and I will ask him, hey, this, can you come out? Can you explain our cer- you know, what we have, you know, you know, these guys would.
That's from Comcast?
No, this would be from Verizon. You know, these guys would be hounding us if they could sell us phones and, and do all of this. So I'm guessing.
Yeah, but they can't sell us phones if we don't have it and we.
That's why, that's why the guy said, he said, nobody's calling you because you, it's not available at high-speed infrastructure.
That doesn't make any sense. They don't know what they're talking about.
I, I will, uh, I will call.
Right? I mean, Derek.
You, you said, you said the, the two letters before.
What's, oh, BS, yeah.
Yeah, it, it, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
You know? I just want better internet for all of us here. The speed that I got, it's way too.
That's three megabytes?
Yeah, that's.
Uh, sorry, I'm waiting for you got mail. With Jim the other day.
Yeah.
Um, cause we were debating on, you know, we had discussed as committee, you know, bringing up getting better internet in the building or, you know, do we have Comcast put in a separate line just for us? Um, but, you know, we kinda looked at, well, that's an extra expense for.
Now you're paying double because you gotta pay business.
Right, we would be paying for, and it's, you know, like I told Jim, all your, all the town's bandwidth is during the day, all of ours is at night, so kinda. Right, we would be paying for, and it's, you know, like I told Jim, all your, all the town's bandwidth is during the day, all of ours is at night, so it kind of seems dumb to be paying for two of them, you know, so.
So I'm gonna be, you know, I'll be reaching out to the Verizon, our Verizon rep, um, and seeing if he can come out and, and meet with us. Um, and seeing, you know, if that, if that, what the first rep told me, if that's true.
Yeah.
Yeah, try to get some answers on that because it's ridiculous. This, the internet's way too slow here.
Which one? The numbers he gave us a little bit before?
No, that's Comcast.
Okay.
Yep.
And if you could just let, you know, the residents know that reason why it's slow and you have, we have these problems because the internet's.
That comment, that, you know, it's due to our bandwidth and something we're currently.
We're trying to work through just another problem that we gotta deal with in this community.
Yeah.
You could also say that they can plug into the Zoom meeting.
Right, yeah.
Which also is running on the internet right now.
Yeah, well, that, that's a struggle. As, you know, you guys are running Zoom down here.
Yeah.
We got the Facebook Live running and we got our live stream running. That's all using the upload bandwidth. You know, when, when you got ten megabytes.
Yeah.
I, I think Facebook recommends at least seven for going live. I don't, I don't know what the Zoom, I don't know what their recommendation. I know our, I know our live stream is really low bandwidth because it's on like a forty-five second or sixty-second delay. So it uploads packets at a time.
Yeah, buffers.
So.
Yeah. Well, again, we apologize for people, but we're trying to work through the tech, technical problems and we'll find a solution for the internet here. And see if we can upgrade the service somehow and get it better for people.
Door is always open.
All right, thank you very much, Travis. All right, any other comments and concerns?
A few weeks ago, I, I spoke with, um, Jake McKean's dad at the, uh, Highway Department. Um, he mentioned that, that he would like to have, they would like to have some sort of like a tablet or something so they could, you know, look at the weather and look at things. I'm just, I'm just communicating what his wishes was.
Where is this?
Highway Department.
Oh.
You know, um.
A tablet to look at the weather?
And, and also to order stuff that they do over there. I don't know.
Don't they have computers?
Yeah, I know, they have computers, but I think he only works part-time, um.
Yeah, he only works part-time. I mean, you see he out and about, but they have a TV in the back that they watch the weather. And Jeremy watched AccuWeather like a hawk. And he can probably tell you when the next storm is coming within seconds, but.
Monday, Tuesday?
Three inches?
Three inches.
Well, I just wanted to bring what he mentioned into me.
So I don't know if he means it when they're in their truck, but why would you want that?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Indeed, more information on that.
Well.
Not dismissing it, but.
But Jeremy would put that in his budget then.
Yeah, and why isn't he going to Jeremy about it? Jeremy's the department head.
Yeah.
He should be going through the department head and asking Jeremy for it.
If it's reasonable, Jeremy would, Mark would, if it's not.
Well, and that's the thing, Jeremy's, that's his job.
I'm, I'm just a messenger. Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, anybody else have any comments and concerns? Mr. Conrad?
Okay, uh, the, uh, senior center is looking for a grant because they need to replace the furnace heat transfer pump. I think the highest temperature they've gotten all winter is sixty-seven degrees in the building.
Do we know about that?
Yes.
We're already working it?
They are looking for a grant because of the expense.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Anybody else have any comments, concerns?
Railroad ties.
Uh, email went out two days ago. I called Maurice O'Connell about three weeks ago, um, and had this discussion with him. Uh, he, um, he said that he would take care of it. I took pictures of the railroad ties, um.
Yeah, they disappearing.
Last week, yeah.
They gradually disappearing in people's trucks.
Yeah, I just don't wanna, I hate to have them go on the road and somebody runs it over. I mean, that would be dangerous. Um, so I, I brought it to his attention. I did email your chairman, um, Don, he's got a copy of the email.
Anybody else? Comments, concerns? Anybody on Zoom comments, concerns?
No.
Nobody even on Zoom.
Well, Jim McAnus. Oh, Jimmy is?
Yeah.
Hi, Jim.
All right, um, I have nothing.
You have nothing?
Okay, um, so no further comments and concerns. Next meeting is February fifteenth. We're gonna have a sit walk that is gonna be three o'clock PM, and that is gonna be reviewing the school street project. So we'll do a sit walk of that, look at that, and look at the, um, quality of the work over there right now. And then after that, we'll have a regular selectman meeting, and that is, um, at six PM. So Thursday, February fifteenth, three o'clock meeting is a sit walk, and six o'clock is a regular selectman meeting.
I do have, well, one other thing I would share with the board.
No, we already went past that.
On the twenty-second, uh, Mr. Duff has requested to come in, uh, to the board, uh, to make a, a presentation, um, a draft presentation, fluid presentation of his, uh, upcoming fiscal year budget.
Budget, okay, absolutely. We want to get that done as soon as possible, and I know they're finalizing on the fifteenth.
I thought he said he was going to Westbrookfield on the fifteenth.
I know, but.
It's in the minutes.
Aren't they finalizing the twelfth?
Twelve.
So he's go- why is he going to Westbrookfield first?
I, I didn't ask.
All right.
I, I, I'm guessing.
Well, let them give them the bad news first.
I'm, I'm guessing it was because he, he just happened to schedule them first, um.
All right.
I think it's on the twenty.
What day was he on?
Twenty-fifth.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, because didn't he say he was gonna come to us the next day, or, or after they got it?
The fifth was the subcommittee, and then the full com- cool school committee is on Monday.
The twelfth.
Yeah.
The twelfth.
Yep.
So he would probably go see Westbrookfield on like the thirteenth or the twentieth. Probably on the twentieth, and then our meeting would be the twenty-second.
Because they'd be on Tuesday.
Yeah, why?
He told me he was meeting with Westbrookfield on the fifteenth.
On the fifteenth.
So maybe it's a special meeting, maybe it's their advisory, maybe it's their advisory.
Yeah.
Right, yep, definitely. Let's get him in here. If he can do the fifteenth, that's better, but if he can't do the fifteenth?
Yeah.
The next, the following Thursday?
I asked him for the fifteenth. He said, I, 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 he couldn't because he's going to Westbrookfield, and so I said, well, the twenty-second?
All right. Well, we'll see him on the twenty-second if we can't get the fifteenth, if he's going to the other meeting. Um, but yeah, and see if you can get a, a copy of that.
Beforehand?
Beforehand.
Okay.
So we could see it.
All right. I don't see why you, we wouldn't be able to get it, you know, probably the fifteenth.
Yeah, after the twelfth.
Yeah, after the twelfth.
When you vote.
After the twelfth, ask him. Stop putting the bug in his ear and asking him, where's, where's our copy of the budget?
Can we get copies of like current, like what the current budget is too?
Sure.
You know, expenditures to date?
Mm-hmm.
We got that a couple of years ago, remember?
Mm-hmm.
That would be helpful, just to see where they're at.
Okay.
You good with that?
Yep.
Did you have something, Ray?
The, it, just to clarify slightly, there, the budget subcommittee is proposing, you know, they'll give a presentation to the full school committee on the twelfth. It's their presentation. Uh, they, they won't finalize it. They won't, they won't be voting on it until next month, till March.
Well, it's their proposed budget.
It's their proposed budget, but.
And at least we can get a copy of the proposed budget, go from there, have some information.
Like I said, it's a, it's still, it would still be a draft.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so plan. So. Yes, we're good with that, so fifteenth, preferably, twenty-second's fine. All right, so.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
David Biddy's, aye.
David Dufray, aye. We are adjourned.